In the plaza. Thank you. The address of our meeting location is also on the screen. So today I'd like to welcome, exciting occasion, we have some new board members and alternates. So thank you all so much for your willingness to serve. These are Los Altos Councilmember Jonathan Weinberg, who will serve as board member for Group Two, the Northwest Cities. Santa Clara County Supervisor Betty Young, who will serve as the alternate board member for Group Six, County of Santa Clara. San Jose Councilmember Michael Mukehi, who will serve as the alternate board member for Group One in City of San Jose. At this time, I'd invite Elaine to administer the oath of office. And I'll invite you to come up. Congratulations. Thank you all so much. And I also want to know, thank you. And I also want to note for the record, the following. Pat Bird is now an ex officio member representing the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Congratulations, Pat. And Mountain View Councilmember John McAllister has been appointed as the Northwest City Group alternate board member. Thank you, John. And I'd like to welcome the members of the public who are joining us tonight. Welcome to you all. Those who'd like to address the board are encouraged to complete a blue speaker card, which are at the table in the back. Please give these to our board office staff before the item is heard. Virtual attendees can use the raise hand function in Zoom or press star nine if you're dialing in. We'll be inviting those who attended in person to speak first, followed by those who are on Zoom. To my colleagues, note that please keep your mics muted until we're ready to speak. Call my attention if you wish to speak by raising your hand or turning on the red light on your mic. And do we have Board Member Arenas remotely?
She is. She's on.
Okay, Board Member Arenas.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I believe we'll be doing roll call items for each item. And her teleconference location is on the agenda. And with that, let's do the roll call, Elaine.
Thank you, Chair Abicoga, present. Arenas.
Arenas.
Here.
Thank you. Bozo. Bozo is present. Ex officio member Burt.
Here.
Thank you. Candelas. Present. Cohen.
Here.
Young. Betty. Present. Foley.
Here.
Jane. Absent. Kamay. Present. McAllister. Absent. Montano.
Here.
Montano, present. Moore. Moore, present. Mukehi. Mukehi, present. Sell.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Weinberg.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mahan.
Here.
Chairperson Lopez.
Here.
We have a quorum chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item 1.2, which is orders of the day. We have an addendum to the agenda, which is item 5.2.x, an information item regarding the biennial budget preparation. Are there any other changes requested from my colleagues? I know, not seeing any. Are there any changes from staff? Nope?
We don't need, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so can I get a motion in a second to... Oh, we only, okay. So moving on to item two, which is, thank you, which is awards and commendations. Item 2.1 are the resolutions of appreciation for the following outgoing VTA board members. Marie Blankley, Dev Davis, Omar Dean, Otto Lee, Lynette Lieng, and Rob Rennie. And at this time, I'd like to open public comment for this item. Do we have any commenters wishing to speak on this item?
There are no requests to speak in the in-person location.
Thank you. So that concludes public comment. Now I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to adopt the resolutions of appreciation.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Could we get the roll call?
Yes, Chair. Abicoga.
Aye.
Arenas. I'll come back to you. Candelas. Candelas, aye. Cohen.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Kamay. Board Member Jane is absent, so I'll call on Montano.
Aye.
Sell.
Aye.
Turner.
Yes.
Weinberg.
Yes.
I'll come back to Board Member Arenas.
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Mahan.
Aye.
Chairperson Lopez.
Aye.
Motion passed, Chair.
Thank you. Now at this time, I'll invite each former board member who is here. So if I read your name, please come forward to the dais to receive your resolution and token of appreciation. And while we do that, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Mahan.
Thank you, Chair. And I believe we're starting with Marie Blankley. Is that right? All right. Hi, Marie. Good to see you. All right, I'm going to read a summary of the commendation. Whereas Marie Blankley has demonstrated exceptional leadership and unwavering commitment to the fiscal sustainability of VTA, serving with distinction as chairperson of the Administration and Finance Committee. Whereas Marie Blankley passionately championed efforts to improve services for the communities in South Santa Clara County and the broader mega-regional area. Whereas her visionary advocacy was instrumental in securing enhanced Caltrain service to Gilroy. Now therefore be it resolved that the VTA Board of Directors extends its heartfelt commendation and deepest gratitude to Marie Blankley for her extraordinary dedication. Congratulations. All right. Next up, I believe we had Dev Davis, my former colleague in City of San Jose. Whereas Dev Davis contributed valuable experience to VTA through her service on several key committees, including leading the SSTPO Committee and Diridon Station Joint Policy Board and BART to Silicon Valley Phase Two Oversight Committee. Whereas Dev Davis demonstrated steadfast leadership on regional transportation policy, serving on the Caltrain Board of Directors. Whereas Dev Davis demonstrated strong advocacy skills that helped secure governance enhancements for Caltrain that had been required by the counties before voters were asked to approve Measure RR in 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the VTA Board of Directors hereby commends and expresses its deepest gratitude to Dev Davis for her exemplary public service and leadership. Congratulations. Okay. And now we are on to Lynette Lieng. Hi, Lynette. All right. Whereas Lynette Lieng has been a strong advocate for transportation improvements since joining the VTA Policy Advisory Committee in 2017, demonstrating a commitment to fostering collaboration between VTA and smaller cities. And whereas her efforts ensured equitable access to competitive grant programs and a fair distribution of 2016 Measure B Sales Tax Program funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the VTA Board of Directors hereby commends and expresses its sincerest appreciation to Lynette Lieng for her exemplary public service. Congratulations. All right. And now Rob Rennie. Hey, Rob. Whereas Rob Rennie has been a steadfast advocate for sustainable transportation, championing environmentally friendly mobility options during his tenure on the Policy Advisory Committee, which he chaired in 2023. And whereas Bob Rennie has earned admiration from colleagues and staff alike for his business acumen, dedication to transparency, and focus on equitable decision-making, particularly in areas such as grant funding and capital project management. Now therefore be it resolved that the VTA Board of Directors hereby commends and expresses its sincerest appreciation to Rob Rennie for his exemplary public service. Thank you. Thank you all for your service to our community. Okay, we're doing a big group photo with the whole board. Here we go. All right.
Yes, I'm going to look for a stand so that it's not.
So next on our agenda is item number three, public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board directors on any item within the board's jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. In addition, for those who are here to talk for what might be item nine, which is the closed session item, as a courtesy, just so we don't keep you all around all night, because I think it'll be a long meeting. I'm going to allow the opportunity, if you wish to speak, to come up during this closed session item. We will have to, we normally reserve up to 30 minutes, and I'm going to try to be as flexible as we can, just understanding the folks that are here today. And I've already received a stack of comment cards where you do reserve the right if we require to continue it to the appropriate time in the agenda later on. But again, we'll try to be flexible, appreciating all those who made the time to be here today. So I'll just note. Actually, with that, let's just begin public comment, and I'll start with speaker cards. First up, we'll bring up Raj Singh. And then... And then, I'm sorry, before you begin. Then Jerry Bromley, Alicia Prieto, John Papaschek, and Zach Bodal. Sorry, Raj. Go ahead.
Yes, yes.
All right. Normally it's this mic, but just again, I'm just going to kind of ask that if I can be given some leeway, I'll definitely be going over that one-minute mark, so I would appreciate.
We'll be a little flexible to the extent we can, and again, just appreciation.
Once again, good evening, directors. Today, I stand in front of you to provide a negotiations update and convey our members' position and sentiment and express the urgency needed to come to terms on a new contract with ATU. These might be my words, but these words are the sentiments of all the men and women behind me. It's been five months now, and the agency hasn't moved from their disrespectful initial offer on wages. Along with offering only 1% each year, they repeatedly have asked us to take concessions on benefits that we fought for in the past. We don't see any management or executive staff giving anything back, and neither will we. From the start, we've attempted to negotiate and get faith, only bringing a handful of items to the table in order to expedite its talks, but that sentiment has not been responded in kind. In fact, the lead negotiator actually stated that the agency's goal is always to build off of zero when it comes to us. Furthermore, it was even stated that, at a time, the agency team was prepared to shut down negotiations. I don't think that's good faith negotiations. Someone explained to us how is it that this is different from the past? Shouldn't the manner of negotiations for ATU members or what is being offered considered before is made so that the employees are not disgusted or feel unappreciated? What changes has the agency made in the past three or four years that are different from previous? It sounds like more of the same to me. Words can be powerful, but actions ultimately speak louder. So I urge this board to direct the general manager and the staff to provide us with a fair contract. It's these men and women who provide VTA's daily service. It's their hard work that got the agency recognized by APTA. They continue to work under strict policies, bad working conditions, all while juggling their own personal lives, working 12 to 15 hours a day, seven days a week. Do the right thing. Give us a fair and equitable contract. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go on to our next speaker, who's Jerry Bromley. And again, after that, we have Alicia Prieto and then John Papaschek. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Can everybody hear me? Good evening, board. We stand here tonight united, not just as ATU workers, but as people who believe in fairness, respect, dignity in the workplace. A fair contract isn't just about wages or benefits. It's about recognizing the value of our work and protecting our rights and ensuring a future where we can not just survive, but thrive. And the Bay Area is difficult, as you know. I have worked for VTA for 38 years, and each contract I've seen, our benefits slowly slip away. And it's 38 years I've seen a lot. You call us essential workers, yet you hesitate when it's time to treat us as such. We win awards. People come to work every day, drive long distance, work long hours. I feel they deserve more. A fair contract means safe working conditions, livable wages, and a voice at the table where decisions are made. Means respect. Please provide us with fair and equitable contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And next, we have Alicia Prieto, and I appreciate the enthusiasm. I'll note that for this time, that we're extending as a courtesy, we have 30 minutes. Well, we'll try to work with you, otherwise we'll have to continue to the closed session item when this time would normally be allotted. Thank you. And after that, sorry, Alicia, John Papaschek, Zach Bodal, Julia Durash, and then Glenn Overton. Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of I and, you know, all of my associates behind me, we work very hard. We come here every day, and it just seems with inflation that's rising, some of us are single parents. Some of us work really hard, seven days a week to come here, and for it to be just 1%, we don't deserve that. We deserve better, you know? We don't have anybody, we can't just give ourselves a raise. We have to come before you and ask you for, you know, a livable wage. We depend on you guys to stand behind us as well, because what we are being asked of is that 1% is ridiculous, you know? What they're asking for is not a lot, just to survive here. So, you know, like, it's just hard coming to work, seven days a week. Imagine you working seven days a week, you know? Well, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. John Papaschek. And sorry, sorry, John, before you begin, I'd encourage you to line up if you'd like. I think I'll make it go a bit faster. I'll just read the next few names. Zach Bodal, Julia Durash, Glenn Overton, John Randville, and then Rob Means.
All right, good evening, board members. My name's John Papaschek. I'm the Recording Financial Secretary for ATU. Hey, I have my speech, but I want to look around the room, and I hope that all of the board members look at every face in this room. These are hardworking people that come here to serve the public, and they want, they moved this county, and that's what I want you to see. And without these people, but I want you to know that there's another 40 or 50 people outside that aren't in here. The capacity's 280. We max this place out, so I want that here. I am proud to be ATU. I am proud to be ATU tonight. Thank you. Thank you. So I'll just go. A fair contract is not merely a financial issue. It's a matter of dignity and respect for their unwavering commitment to public service. I urge you as community leaders to recognize the central role of our members' play and address their needs through a fair contract. One that values hard work and keeps the pace of reality with the realities of today's economy. Thank you for your time. Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Zachary Bodal, Assistant Business Agent for Maintenance, and I represent the dedicated members of local ATU 265, who work tirelessly to keep our transportation agency running smoothly and efficiently. We stand before you today, united as a collective voice advocating for a fair union contract. Deflects the hard work and commitment of our members. Our employees are the backbone of this agency. That our services are safe and reliable and accessible to the community we serve. A fair contract is not just about wages, it's about respect. Job security and the vital role of our employees play in the agency's success. It ensures that we attract and retain skilled professionals, which is essential for the continued excellence of our service. It enables to maintain high standards, improve morale, ultimately to provide a better service to our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. ATU!
Thank you. I'm sorry, we had Julia Durash, then Glenn Overton, John Randville, and Rob Means.
Hi. I just want to say that we all work long hours. We have given up family activities because we couldn't be there, because we had to be required to come to work, and we were dedicated. We all have our own stories, but let me tell you just two of mine. I contracted scabies from the bus. Scabies is a mite that crawls into your pores of your skin and lays an egg. I bet none of you have come home from your work situation with scabies. Two weeks ago, on El Camino, at noon, I had a passenger come on and indicated he had a gun in his bag and that he was going up and down the aisle and telling the passengers, "I'm going to pop your head off. And I'm going to pop your head off." And yet I'm having to drive the bus safely, and I'm having to maintain my passengers safely. These are the situations.
Thank you.
We have to do. So please consider our wage.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking for a variance on this. This is an agenda item. The VTA Phase Two.
I'm sorry, which item are you speaking on?
I want to speak on VTA Phase Two BART.
I'm sorry, we'll ask you to hold that later until when it comes up.
The only reason why I asked for a variance is because I came from Concord, California, and it's a long, you know, trip back.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board and of management, I'm looking for more transparency on VTA BART presentation materials online. I'm looking for a series of animations, one that will show the difference between the double bore and the single bore, one that will show an animation of the complete construction process, one that will also show the complete customer experience through that system, and one that will also show the contingency planning, meaning worst-case scenario, how are you going to rescue a 300-pound person out of that issue, out of that construction? So I'm looking for you to present, you know, more transparency. I've attended at least 30 BART meetings. This has raised every meeting, and there's been little or no communication from, so I try, as a citizen down here, to say, you know, be more transparent, let us understand your philosophy on that construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are specific items that were brought up, I'll ask staff to follow up. We'll have, I'll read out a few names if folks want to line up. John Rainville, Rob Means, Lupe Midrano, Michael Valencia, and Ashley Olvera. And John, please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is John Rainville. I've been a VTA passenger since 1976. And I appreciate you guys. I really do. Out of the bottom of my heart, I appreciate all you, because I take the 522, 22, 23, 68, 66, all the run, except for the express buses, because they were only run from morning to evening. But anyways, what I'd like to stress with you guys is trying to get the 522 route, I think the BRT, is that what it's called, the BRT? Going from the El Camino all the way to Palo Alto. The reason why, my girlfriend, she has relatives in Palo Alto, and it took her almost four to five hours to get from downtown all the way to Palo Alto because of the traffic. And I know some of you guys, and drivers, sorry, drivers, that do the 522 and the 22. I feel you. I totally feel you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Previously, I asserted that the current federal administration is unlikely to spend, send five billion dollars to fund the BART borough. Clearly, we are dealing with a vengeful person who harbors antagonism toward California and Governor Newsom. You likely heard about the Project Twenty Twenty-Five section on transit, which calls for, quote, "sound economic standards and a rigorous cost-benefit analysis." Because it was cited in several news articles, including one entitled "BART Extension Now A Concern As Federal Funding Doubts Rise." But you may not have heard about the memo from DOT Secretary Sean Duffy stating funding preference for, quote, "communities with marriage and birth rates higher than the national average," of which the top ten are red states. That sounds to me like three strikes against the five billion dollars we're expecting for the BART borough. How does it sound to you?
So, so we have Lupe Medrano up next, Lupe, then Michael Valencia, Ashley Olvera, and then James White, uh, Whitman. And then we'll go to, once we have no more in person, we'll go online.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Ms. Lupe Medrano, and I'm here to ask VTA, please honor your own words. For the VTA member, we were told last year several times that VTA wants to lessen the time onboard for its clients, of which I am one. And I am especially asking you to please respect and have some compassion for those riders who are mentally challenged or dementia or dialysis patients because they are being driven around unnecessarily. And so if you really want to lessen the time onboard for these clients, please do so. And if I can put my two cents worth in, without all these employees here, you will not have a VTA organization to run. So please, we make VTA great again and give them a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask Lisa, yeah, oh, thank you. If you could follow up, thank you so much with our commenter. Thank you. Next, we have Michael Valencia.
Hello, board members and Congresswomen. Sorry if I said it wrong. I'm just a regular employee, barely able to live. I can't go to work without having to spend ten to twelve hours a day, eight hours of sleep. That's two to four hours if I'm lucky for my family, not even enough time to do any and all errands. Can't afford this Bay Area. Will never be able to afford a house. I'll have to move out, retire somewhere else, if I can even retire. By the time I retire, most of us bus drivers, we die within five to ten years. In that time, I'll have no vacations, no extracurricular time, nothing for my family in any way, given, shape, or form, without a fair wage. I need you to remember and remind yourself, would you do that to your family and your friends? Do you want to live here? Do you want to retire? Would you like to do something else and go to work every day, all the time?
Ashley Olvera? Yeah, Ashley Olvera. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Olvera, and I'm a bus operator for VTA as well as a shop steward proudly for ATU two six five. I'm here to ask you to support us in our right to a fair contract. I personally have sat in negotiations and in my opinion, they have not been negotiating in good faith. Thanks, Bob. By the way, um, I want you to remember that it was us during COVID. It was us during the pandemic that hit us extremely hard. It hit our grandmother and everyone else getting a prescription. We had to make sure that the grandmother was getting their prescription. That's where I was going with that. The nurse that was getting to the Valley Med to complete her shift, the unhoused were getting to a shelter, and it was us ensuring that the sick was getting designated testing for the fairgrounds. We had to drop them off. It was us during COVID that made sure that everyone got a vaccine, by the way. I personally have been with COVID thirteen times. I get it. I'm just saying, make sure we get a fair contract because we move this county and no one else moves this county but us.
And, and, uh, I'm sorry, James before, sorry. After James Whitman, I have Ken Robles, and then we'll see if there are any other speed cards, and then we'll go online. Thank you so much.
Um, this is James Whitman. You need to give these drivers a fair contract. It needs to be fifteen dollars per hour. Fifteen dollars per hour. And we need to get, we need to get more strict to our passengers being bad on our bu- buses and light rail systems. I was at the VTA Bar Oak Light Rail Station, some customer saying the F word. That should not be permitted on our VTA buses or light rail or anything. You need to give these people a good amount of your share and, um, yes, and everybody needs to have a good share and we need to have a good contract or else we're gonna take a walk.
Thank you. And we have Ken Robles.
How's it going, guys? My name is Ken Robles. I'm a well-respected man amongst my peers here. I just want to let you guys know at this point, what's up, Matt? You know who I am. It's not about the money to me, but I'll fight for the money for my people. It's about a fair, safe workplace. We work fifteen hours a day and only get paid for eight or nine hours of that. And my family thinks it's okay that I work sixty hours in two days and only get paid for twenty, you know? So make it fair. I speak for all these people in here that don't want to speak. I'm a shop steward and I gotta stand up for people and take their pain and their issues and explain it to you guys. We're not getting treated fairly at all. We just need to get treated fairly, as simple as that. There's a lot going on. Your COO even left. There's an issue here. Up top, not at the bottom. Carolyn, make this right for our people. We work every day and make it right for you. Everyone got their raises and everyone goes home to their family. While I make crumbs and you guys get to enjoy the luxuries of life, we can't. We gotta show up to, hold on. We gotta show up to work. Give me a couple of seconds. We gotta show up to work every day, and if we don't show up on time, we get in trouble. You guys, when we need help, you guys go to meetings and no one's to be found, no one's to be heard of. We go to River Oaks. Oh, we're in a meeting. We're this, we're that. It's not fair. Hold us to a high standard. We're gonna hold you guys to a high standard. You guys need to be held accountable. Let's be fair. You know, we went to Great America. My daughter said, oh, Daddy, this is fun. VTA paid for that. Are we gonna get shot? Come on, man. Those are my daughters. You know, I work every day, six, seven days a week, and I'm gonna fight for these people for what's right. You know what's right is to treat us right. We're humans. We want to go home to our family. We can make well over six figures, but we can't. And you guys wonder why no one shows up to work and no one does nothing because we get treated like crap. This is not okay. And I can say, they could voucher me. Treat us right, please. That's all I ask. Treat us right. This is from the heart. This is not from the phone. I want to get treated right. And I'm not the only one that wants to get treated right here. We want, we want to make a, a place for our family. We want to make a future a blue collar. I'm the only one from my family is a blue collar worker. And I'm proud of that. And I want to show my daughters different, but I can't because I get treated like crap and don't want to come to work. From management, from our own coworkers, from dispatch detailers, the list goes on. We got a lot to work on, yes, ATU, but we're here to work and we show up. And look at, we showed up. Treat us right, please. Treat us right. ATU!
Thank you. Well, we're gonna go to our public comment online. Thank you.
Ready. Barney, go ahead and accept the unmute and begin speaking when ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this board. My name is Barney Smith, and I'm a licensed professional engineer for the record. I've been speaking to this board regularly for over a year about VTA's unsafe BSV two project. It should be clear to the entire board that VTA cannot afford this current twelve point eight billion dollar single bore boondoggle. Pulling all of the money from Measure A funds to make up only half of the one point two billion dollar shortfall is irresponsible. And it should be clear that the current administration in Washington is likely to rescind the five point one billion dollar grant for this completely mismanaged mess of a project. We all recognize the importance of completing a mass transit ring around the bay. So I think that this board's best chance to retain some portion of the federal funding, continue to move this project forward and to provide the safe and customer-friendly transit system that the Bay Area needs, would be to inform Washington that you are going to save five billion dollars by returning to the safer, cheaper to operate and maintain, and faster to build twin-board design. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to our last in-person comment. Jesse Davis, please.
Thank you. My name is Jesse L. Davis, Jr. I am one of the oldest, newest persons at VTA. I've only been with VTA for three years. In three years, I have a clean safety record. I come to work. I've been assaulted. I've been spit on. I've been called out of my name numerous times, but I still come to work. I come to work because I came in under the new contract that says if I do five years, I can get out and I get everything. I'm thankful for that. But when I see that the company that I work for, and I've worked for AC Transit, and I've worked for Wheels and Saddles in Dublin, Cusworth, and Livermore, and I have twenty-four years of driving, and when I see the company that I work for tell me that I'm not worth nothing, that hurts. Please, please, please. When you buy eggs, they cost eighteen dollars a carton. When I buy them, they cost the same amount of money. I got five, I got twenty-seven grandchildren. Somebody ought to say something. Twenty-seven. So my Christmas, I come to work. Please, 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 don't disrespect us. We don't want to strike, but we will.
Chairperson, we have one more online.
Okay, let's go to our online speaker. Thank you.
David, go ahead and accept the unmute and begin speaking when ready.
Yes, I just wanted to say that through all the, all the the different trials and tribulations that we go through as, as bus operators, and my name is David Pope. I'm known as Pope. Spitting, the, the verbal assault, the physical assault, everything like that, and we have to try to to just make it through the day to go through, go home to our families. And with all the, all the raises that, that everybody else gets, the higher ups, mismanaging of, of funds, the buildings of, 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 of different properties on VTA property, but nothing for, nothing for the drivers. The people who move the county, we're, we are a huge source of VTA, of VTA funds. So the fact that, the fact that we get treated like this is absolutely ridiculous. The cost of living is skyrocketing by the day. And yet you guys give us peanuts. Come on, guys. You guys can do better than that. That's it.
Well, thank you. That concludes my comment. Thank you to everyone who, who joined us and exercised your right to speak, and thank you to our bus drivers for keeping us moving. We'll now move on to items four, item number four. There are no public hearings today, so that brings aside number five, which is our reports. First item is five point one, which is our committee reports. And I, do we have Kylie here? Okay, we have Kylie Clark here. It's Citizens Advisory Committee Chairperson to provide the report. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Lopez, Vice Chair Mahan, General Manager Ganaa, and members of the board. My name is Kylie Clark, and I'm honored to serve as Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee for twenty twenty-five. So just a little background on myself. I just finished up a master's in human rights at Columbia University, and for my thesis, I studied young adult homelessness in San Jose. Some of you actually participated in interviews for that, so thank you. And with me, and now for my day job, I am the Policy and Advocacy Manager at the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. And with me via Zoom is Debbie Armstrong, our vice chair, so she will do a quick introduction.
Do we have Deborah online?
Yes, I am here. My name's Debbie Armstrong. I'm visually impaired. I am your vice chair. Good evening, everyone. I'm actually commuting now. I'm a lifelong public and pair transit rider. And as usual, my ride was really late, so I'm still riding around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah. I'm very excited to have her as my vice chair, and I also just want to thank my fellow committee members for entrusting us to these positions. I really look forward to informing you all this year about the CAC's discussions and ideas on board, board priorities, as well as our activities and findings in our role as watchdog committee members for two thousand Measure A. Speaking of Measure A, at our first meeting of the year on January fifteenth, the CWC received a couple of presentations. We received a refresher on our ballot-defined duties, responsibilities, and limitations. We also heard from Crow LLP, our independent auditors, who will be conducting compliance auditing services on behalf of the committee. Crow presented their proposed audit plan and schedule for the compliance of audit of two thousand Measure A covering fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The CWC recognizes our responsibility to conduct an independent audit each fiscal year, ensuring that tax dollars are being spent as intended by the measure. And I will, of course, provide updates on the committee's review of two thousand Measure A expenditures at future board meetings. On our CAC agenda, staff provided an update on the development of the twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one VTA strategic plan. We discussed federal and strategic impacts on planning and suggested innovative outreach, innovative outreach strategies, including town halls, pop-ups, and online engagement. We underscored the importance of getting transit users feedback, as obviously we are a committee of transit users, and we really understand that's where a lot of the valuable feedback can be gleaned. And we next received an update on the Stevens Creek Boulevard corridor vision study. The CAC expressed support for improvements like audio pedestrian signals for visually impaired individuals and emphasized the transit and housing integration and the importance of making sure that's happening. There was excitement about the potential of dedicated bus lanes or other high-capacity transit in the long term. We really enjoyed seeing all of the renderings and really thinking about the possibilities on that project. Our February meeting was canceled, so our next meeting is on Wednesday, March twelfth at four PM in person at the VTA headquarters at three 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 one North First Street or via Zoom video and teleconference. So thank you. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Kylie and Deborah, for your service and congratulations on your new masters. We now have fifty, five point one B, which is the Policy Advisory Committee Chairperson's report, and we have PAC Chairperson Yvonne Martinez Beltran joining us remotely. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Lopez, and thank you to the board directors for having me tonight. At our January sixteenth meeting, we approved our committee leadership for twenty twenty-five. And just want to thank everybody who came out and was interested in serving. We were, I was re-elected as chairperson for twenty twenty-five. And we elected our new vice president or vice chair, pardon me, Elliot Scazola of Campbell, who will also help and help chair the meetings. I'm honored to be allowed to serve in this role again this year and excited to work with the chair. And I want to acknowledge, of course, our vice chairperson Raj Shahal of Santa Clara for serving in this position last year. He was, he was a great leadership add. I'm excited to share with you that our committee is well-positioned to examine the policy issues from a whole county perspective and ensure that the needs of residents, commuters, and transit users from across our whole region from the South County where I represent to the West Valley, San Jose, and beyond will all be included in the policy issues that the committee reviews. We looked at, reviewed the recommended VTA Board approval of the Land Use and Development Review Policy Update. We received a Bicycle Superhighway Implementation Plan update and looked at available funding in consideration of the e-bikes. and looked at available funding in consideration of the e-bikes and our planning efforts. And we received a presentation on the 2026 to 2031 Strategic Plan Update and stressed the need to maintain a focus on those communities that depend on VTA. That is our summary of the committee for tonight on the 16th, and I will be back to provide that next month. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks so much. And we have no reports today for items 5.1C, D and E. Uh, do we have any public comment for this item, Seth? Uh, no closing, uh, comment. Um, we'll go on to 5.2, which is the General Manager's report.
Good evening. The photo that you see here on this first page is our celebration of Lunar New Years at River Oaks. And it was a really nice lunchtime event that was enjoyed by many people. And so I just wanted to have that nice, um, sort of beginning here. I want to go next to one of the key items that is on your consent agenda tonight. VTA is committed to providing safe, reliable transportation service to our community. And as legislation mandates, VTA's Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan, or what we call PTAS, must be reviewed annually and submitted to the California Public Utilities Commission for approval. VTA's PTAS-
Excuse me, I, I, can we have somebody come and fix our monitor?
Seth will-
Seth.
Come up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, VTA's PTAS Review Committee, equally comprised of frontline and management, dedicated a tremendous amount of effort to ensure we continue to meet our expectations and submission deadlines. And I want to thank their participation and I want to thank Susan, um, from, uh, the Safety Program, our Deputy Director of System Safety, really for everything that she's done on helping coordinate as well. This is significant revision, um, because there was an addition of nine more safety performance targets. And agencies are being required to report those safety performance targets to the board regularly. So we look forward to not only engaging our board one to two times a year on the PTAS, but also regularly keeping the board apprised of safety performance targets. And one of the drivers for PTAS that had started quite a while ago was, um, some horrific accidents that were on the system, on rail systems. So one of the key elements that came out was is that safety starts from the top, really, and they're looking at the board. So please, if you get a chance, take the time to look at the PTAS and understand the efforts that we put into it. Um, our frontline workers work on that, along with our management team to put that together every year. So I really appreciate, um, the attention. And, um, hopefully you will pass it, um, on the consent calendar this evening. Uh, next slide is on additional safety activities. We're gearing up to transport thousands of riders to and from the multiple major sporting events at Levi's Stadium and SAP Arena, including the Super Bowl, the NCAA College Basketball Tournament and the FIFA World Cup. In anticipation of that, our Safety and Security Division took the lead in two important events this month, last month. The first was an all-day conference on human trafficking on January 28th. And the graphic on the left is part of our new public education campaign on our system. VTA plays a vital role in combating human trafficking as victims are often transported on public transport. And the incidence of this crime seems to increase significantly during public events that attract large global crowds like the Super Bowl and the World Cup. And the second event was a tabletop exercise on emergency management on January 29th, which drew about 70 participants, including several of the major transit, police and fire agencies, the Bay Area Host Committee and the U.S. State Department, Secret Service. These kinds of trainings are being carried out to prepare our system to be safe and secure during those large events. Next slide, please. VTA welcomed our largest class to date of new light rail operators. There were 13 and two new light rail line instructors at a celebration at our headquarters last week. The trainees successfully completed an intense 15-week program that included more than 30 tests, many of which required a score of 90% or higher to pass. So it's a true testament to their dedication and resilience. Eleven of the new graduates transferred from the bus operations and one came from fair inspection. So hiring more light rail operators is also an effort to gear up for those 2026 events I was just talking about. The next slide is on the light rail rehab. Uh, last week, we started another round of light rail rehabilitation work, which means some shutdowns of our light rail service along our system. And we will have bus bridges in place each time a section of track is shut down. The work is focused on repairing and replacing equipment on the light rail tracks and overhead catenary system, where it is approaching the end of its useful life. In 2024, a series of 10 isolated shutdowns took place to minimize impacts to operations. The work will continue through 2025 with seven more shutdowns planned. And we're doing widespread messaging and on social media and our website to let our passengers know what to expect and when to expect it. And the last thing I want to mention on our, my slides is on February 1st, we'll go to the next slide. Uh, VTA's Regional Transportation Services RTS team launched the Mystery Rider Program as an initiative designed to gather feedback from access pair transit clients to improve the quality and reliability of our services. Participants will book and complete a trip as they normally would, then provide feedback through a survey to help enhance key aspects of the service. So if you know those who'd be interested, please pass this information along. And before we switch gears to item 5.2X, I'd like to note that the ridership and safety and security data are on, are in the online packet and also in the online packet. In front of you is the General Manager's CEO Month Report. This is the first one I've done and I'm sure there will be more, um, changes to it as we go along. But if you get a chance, please, um, take a look at it. It has statistics on our ridership, crime, uh, customers' experience and, um, I forget the last field, fiscal. Greg's pointing to himself. It's fiscal. Um, but, um, we hope to continue to provide more information in these graphics and, and actually outlining some of the metrics that are key to our agency going forward. The last thing is, um, as we move on to 5.2X, is that our budget, um, is, we will be bringing it to the board with workshops in April and, and items in May and June. So we have started work on this last year, in the middle of last year. But now I want to ask our Deputy General Manager Greg Richardson to join us for an update for our budget preparations. Greg.
Thank you, Carolyn. Um, for those new here, Greg Richardson, your Deputy General Manager. For those that are a little bit older, Greg Richardson, Assistant General Manager and CFO. I'll still play that role for a little while. But welcome, uh, to everybody. Thank you. As the FY '26 and '27 biennial budget process begins, we wanted to bring awareness really to this body regarding the fiscal performance so far for fiscal year '25 and the opportunities that await us as we develop the budget for submittal to the board in the coming months. So as it relates to fiscal year '25, so fiscal year '25 for us is July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2025. So for the first six months of the fiscal year through December of 2024, we have an operating deficit of 3.4, uh, 3.9 million dollars. And so the main drivers of that deficit right now are basically sales tax, which is probably not a surprise to anybody in this room, as well as, uh, some of our labor costs. And on the sales tax, uh, related to operations, um, we are below budget by about $19.9 million year-to-date. Fortunately, other revenue items, investment income and others are helping to offset some of that, uh, that loss. From the labor side, we have two key drivers from an expense perspective that are exceeding the budget by about $6.4 million. First is the implementation of the Class and Compensation Study across all of VTA. For those that were not here, this study was performed over a 12- to 14-month period that was completed in April of 2024 with an implementation in the early part of fiscal year '25, roughly about July, August, September, uh, July-August timeframe when it was fully implemented. And this was an important commitment that we made to all of the employees at VTA to make the necessary changes and bring employee salaries to market. And this was a critical step in improving employee engagement and morale. And so with that promise, we decided that we would continue and move forward with it, um, based on what we, what we knew at the time. The other one is operator hiring. Um, another commitment that we made during the previous budget process was to meet our planned, uh, service level. And the budget in that time identified an operator need, and this is specifically for bus in this category of about 924 operators, to achieve that objective. As the year progressed, a combination of traffic congestion impact and utilization metrics, utilization metrics is really, it's the annual service hours per operator. And so when that was not returning to previous norms, the need arose to continue our recruiting efforts and actually increase the number of operators. And so during the year, we actually increased it up to a number of 960 in an effort to retain the service that we, we had promised. So what does this mean for the remainder of fiscal year '25? So the approved budget right now for the, for the next six months, uh, actually has a net deficit of nine and a half million dollars. And again, that was the budgeted amount that was identified. Just a quick thing. So that means the first six months, we, first six months, we actually had a surplus through the budget of nine and a half. So it would have been a balanced budget that we would have passed for fiscal '25. But if you take that nine and a half million budgeted amount for the next six months, combined with where we are actually for the first, then in theory, you can imply there's an annual deficit potential of $13.4 million. Now, also keep in mind, sales tax and potentially some of the labor are going to, are going to continue to create pressure on that number as we go forward. So our goal for fiscal year '25 will still remain to find a way to have a balanced budget. That certainly will come with challenges. And so, um, we'll manage costs, we'll reduce expenditures where we possibly can. But ideally, I want to stay away from utilizing any reserves in fiscal year '25, just given the complexity of what might exist in fiscals '26 and '27. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please. So for fiscal years '26 and '27, which is a biennial budget process for us. So as we approach the upcoming cycle, the current environment will present some challenges and some unknowns. So the first is on sales tax. The first major implication we're going to have is with the current trends of sales tax, we're going to have a baseline that's lower than what we had originally projected, um, when we would have gone forward with fiscal year '26. So that'll create a, a lower number to start with. Now, there are some possible positives that could come through. Sales tax maybe rebound, may rebound faster than we're anticipating. And there could be a possibility where we see some impact from the special events in calendar year 2026, that being FIFA and the Super Bowl. But trying to, trying to identify that impact right now is, is a little difficult. Um, another challenge we're going to have is the service to our passengers, because that will still remain a primary goal, uh, for us as we move forward. The question is, can we reduce our current cost? And again, that goes back to improving that utilization metric to keep our current service level. Additionally, the pressure is going to be on us to want to increase service. Because again, that's a promise that we've made that we're going to do what we can to increase the service, improve frequency and liability. But to do that will come with some cost increases. And the question is, will the '26, '27 budget allow for that to happen? Um, as you heard today, um, along with ATU, all of our, um, uh, all of our unions are having contracts that will come due in this calendar year. And so we'll have new contracts that will come forward. And depending on how those are decided, that could impact our budget for, uh, the coming couple of years. And then ultimately, the agency needs, I mean, everyone I know is going to come in. Um, and we're going to be focused on efforts to support operators and enhance passenger experience through improvements to our system and safety and security. Those are going to be critical items that are going to be budget items that are going to come to us that we'll have to make decisions on. Additionally, operating costs related to, uh, Super Bowl and FIFA will create some pressure on us. And then just general staffing needs, uh, staffing needs and costs in certain departments to really appropriately, um, support the overall agency. So with that, you know, this, this upcoming biennial budget cycle, uh, will be tougher than anticipated. And staff will work to bring this body a balanced budget. Again, that's been a commitment that I've made to this body and that's going to be something I'm going to continue to strive to do. There will be some difficult decisions that will need to be made, um, and to make that happen. And as we prepare the proposed budget, we will inform you, um, of that decision-making process throughout the budget process and, uh, as we seek final budget approval. So with that, I'll turn it back to Carolyn.
Yeah, I wanted to give you sort of a, uh, update of where we were and some of the pressures that we're facing. I want to say that, that, you know, I think the areas that are going to be critical for the board to discuss this year and you'll, and you'll see information coming will be about, um, preparing for Super Bowl and FIFA. There is a cost to us. Um, I think as Director Abakogi has seen before, it's often difficult to recoup any of those costs. So, um, it is a cost, the previous Super Bowl was, and we'll have to see how it goes with FIFA. And a lot of that is also trying to work steadily on being able to actually collect passenger revenue, those types of things. Departmental needs to support the agency are really key. And then us, and I don't want, I want, I don't want to tread lightly on the issue about hiring the additional operators just to keep our reliability at a level that's still not meeting a goal. But, um, that's really critical for us because we are up roughly 30-some operators that we're carrying that we didn't expect in this, in these budget years. So those are all activities that will be discussed when we start bringing the budget items forward. But we'd like to bring some topics like Super Bowl and FIFA and preparing for that ahead to the board so we can have that discussion and some of these other areas. Because I think it's important to bring this to you now in this board meeting so that you're able to understand why some of these other activities are going to be critical for the board to have those discussions. So I appreciate, um, the time and Greg is happy, or myself, to answer any questions as well.
Thanks so much. Um, let's go, um, oh, we, um, have a comment from member of the public. We have Harry Neal.
We, we have someone online.
Okay, let's go to-
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks.
Good evening, board members. Uh, my name is Harry Neal. I'm a, a local transit advocate and member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking for myself today in my personal capacity. One of the things that I would like to note from, uh, our General Manager's report is the preparedness for the, uh, Super Bowl and FIFA. Uh, I've noticed that, uh, in my day job where sometimes I'll, I will work at Levi's doing some of the guest services and such, and I will take light rail to and from, um, I've noticed that sometimes, uh, the trains have to stop for power concerns. That is something definitely to, uh, take note of and make sure that that doesn't happen because, uh, if we have a train that's got a thousand people on it and it stops for, uh, you know, there's, there's too many trains drawing power from the, from the overhead wires in a given section, uh, that's going to be kind of media suicide. So we want to make sure to avoid that at the very least. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and let's go to our commenter online.
Barney, go ahead and unmute and begin speaking when ready.
Thank you. My name is Barney Smith. I'm a licensed professional engineer for the record. I'd like to remind the board and the General Manager of the requirements of the 2001 VTA BART Comprehensive Agreement. Please review paragraphs G and H in the recitals of the contract. Paragraph G requires that, quote, "action by the BART Board of Directors will be necessary to commit BART to a definite course of action in connection with the SVRT project." My question is, when will the unsafe current 2023 single-board design be brought to the BART Board for action? The current design is not the design that was approved by BART in 2018. And a paragraph H states that, quote, "VTA and BART acknowledge that the proposed SVRT project must be planned and designed and constructed under the auspices of the Joint BART-VTA Policy Body." Again, where is this joint policy body and when will they be approving this unsafe overly-
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to see, um, see if there are any questions from, uh, colleagues, um, on the General Manager's report or on Greg's, uh, budget presentation. Thank you, Greg. Uh, yes, Pam, please.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, although it's not as positive as I was, hope it would be, Greg, but I certainly understand the situation that it, we're in. Regarding, uh, 2026, and we've heard from other agencies that they lost money in a time when they expected to increase revenues. I'm wondering how you assess the cost to VTA for, and the events that are going to occur in 2026? Are we, do we look at parent or, or other organizations, similar organizations in the country? And what did they do to sort of stem the tide of the loss? Because you have to provide the services. So how do we make up for that?
Yeah, I would say that, um, speaking frankly, this is one of our probably biggest challenges, is trying to identify through what I would say the Bay Area Host Committee is being what I would consider to be that central source for us to help coordinate some of these efforts, to identify some of those funding needs or funding opportunities, whether it be local, state or even federal. Because what we're seeing is a lot more of the, of the committees within the host- Because what we're seeing is a lot more of the committees within the host cities are really being active in that regard. And so now we are attempting to be a part of that. I know, in fact, I saw a message today about wanting to join on a letter that's going to go to the feds that's being started by the Massachusetts Transportation Authority, I believe, to help drive some of the federal funding that would help bring some monies here. So we're trying to keep in touch. We have constant meetings, at least on the West Coast, with the Seattle and LA folks to keep in touch with what they're doing, to try to figure out ways in which we can find other funding mechanisms to help support the overall program. It's going to be a challenge locally. I fully appreciate that. So we've got to, you know, pound the streets to figure out how we can get some money in.
So you mentioned federal funding as a possibility, and I'm very concerned about that source right now.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Are you?
Trust me, I fully appreciate that we have that concern. I think the, what I'm going to hope for, again, it could be based on regional, if that's the decisions that are made. But I think the concept of showing the United States as being ready for these particular events, I think will help some of that conversation on the federal side. So the opportunity might be there to get some of those dollars again, because what you don't want to see is cities in the United States not presenting well with some of these events, especially on the FIFA side. So hopefully that helps sway some of that conversation. But still, that's, that's help for determination.
Okay, so you'll be coming back to us.
And also just, I'll note that we've got a federal update coming up, so save your questions.
Oh, okay, good. The next one isn't a federal question, though. So in the, in the revenue side related to 2026, are there opportunities for us to increase advertising revenue on our buses and other areas that we might be able to sell more revenue, more advertising because of the sheer volume of people who will be here? And are we looking at that?
Yes, absolutely. I think we'll be looking at it just in the general advertising component as we do with our current advertising partners. The other piece is going to be trying to teaming up with some of the teams that will be here and figure out ways in which we can have them promote their, their city, their team through some of the advertising opportunities that could be there. So we, we are going to look at as many ways possible to increase the advertising component. Again, it'll be, that's probably where it's going to be a revenue to help support the cost. It's not going to be a major incremental number, but it certainly would be a help to what we have to do from a cost perspective for the, for the events.
Okay, great. I look forward to more information as it gets closer. Thank you.
I meant to say, bring your questions, so we want to put our great federal team on the spot. But thank you. I'm going to go to Director Abicoga, and then we'll go to Director Ex officio Burt. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. And yes, I am very concerned about the events and as much as they're exciting to have, I remember 2014 and the sales tax revenue that we were all told would happen, it didn't really happen, and it put us in a, I believe, in quite a big hole. So I know there's talk, and I hear there's federal lobbying for federal funding, the state, the state has already provided some funding, perhaps there's more, although I think what's happening in Southern California may dampen that. But also, the idea of some kind of user fee is something that's being talked about. But I guess just moving forward, and how are we planning to work on these items? Is it staff level? Do you anticipate the board getting involved? I think there might, we could be of help, is my thought, especially as, you know, it's not just us, right? We have to work with all of the other agencies involved. So just wanted to get your thoughts on that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, what I was going to say is, however we can engage this board, and especially for those of you that sit on MTC, you know, the opportunity there to help push some of the, the ticketing exercise, the fare process to get it into the tickets themselves, and Director Abicoga has had conversations with me about that. So things that we can do to help get engagement from this board in other areas in which they serve can definitely be a big plus. And then on the legislative side, of course, I mean, anything that we can do, not even the legislative, the political environment, because again, where we sit, so many cities and counties and other associations and other agencies are all having to figure out how to work together because we really don't have a center core that's helping sort of drive that. And so we're all trying to figure out how to do that. And now the time is getting pretty crunched. And so we've got to get that resolved so that we're taking care of not only the event at the event, but downtown San Jose, how we're going to take care of the passenger traffic, how we're going to take care of pedestrian. I mean, it's just all of those things that have to get coordinated and that the proper costs are being borne by the proper group and that we're not having to take on more than, than we should.
Yeah, let me just add on a little bit. One of the things is, one of the things we are getting ready is, we do have weekly meetings internally about what we need to do in terms of being ready for it. The other area is, is a region is trying to meet with the Bay Area Host Committee. They've talked about a transportation piece, but we still need to, they're a little behind. Well, actually, when you're sitting on these committee, I mean, these calls that are with all the cities from the World Cup and they have the transades, we're behind at the Bay, in the Bay Area. I think part of it is, is that there is, there isn't one, one group. We're trying to take the lead now on the transit piece. That's really critical for us because everything's going to funnel into us. And I think there's been a focus maybe more on BART. So that's going to be important. I think the other area, when we talked about the sales tax generation, is there's a focus so much on San Francisco. It's the San Francisco Bay Area FIFA site. It's the San Francisco, you know, the Super Bowl is the San Francisco. So the more that we can have events in Santa Clara County and have that, and I know the mayor is working very hard on that, that will actually help generate the revenues that we need as well through sales tax and that. Last time, everything was up in the San Francisco area. So I think the ability with FIFA to have a real dynamic center over time, over those three weeks, could be really, really see us, you know, be an economic generator for us. But at the same time, we have to be prepared for that. But I, but I do appreciate, so I think some of that work is going to be important. And some of it is, is actually talking to those who sit as directors on the Bay Area Host Committee and not just the supporter, which I think some of you have relationships with them as well.
Thank you. Director Burt.
Yeah, thank you. So the concept of having transit fares built into ticket pricing is intriguing. But I was thinking on the, on the broader issue of our special events, we have an exceptionally low fare box recovery. And part of that issue is that if, if we only have a driver and we have partially, just a fraction of the capacity on a bus or light rail, it doesn't make sense to, or we have real challenges in fare box recovery. But when we have special events where we're packing those cars, have we ever added fare collectors to work alongside the drivers to achieve strong fare box recovery in those circumstances?
Generally, what you'll find is we'll have mobile clipper tap machines at the events themselves for the light rail. And so there's an opportunity there. And again, it's going to be difficult based on staffing and, and just watching the lines go through. But generally speaking, yes, people who want to ride the system, they normally would have to tap to get on. And the tap is going to be, let's just call it four, 500, 300 yards away from the actual entry to the train.
Okay, so that, that the clipper card tap is part of the queuing in line.
Correct. And then normally, there's a, if those who don't have it, they have an opportunity to buy it at the Niners. In this case, it would be, would be the Niners game is what I'm referring to.
Thank you.
Even special events.
We, we do have, and we do have an agreement with, I believe, with the 49ers, correct?
Right, so yeah.
Or we do get some funding, but only for the 49ers games.
49ers and special events. Anything held, anything held at Levi's Stadium, there is a revenue component that we're generating to basically absorb some of the cost, but we're also able to retain the revenues generated by the, by the Clipper.
Yeah.
But it's all based on tap. That's going to be, and just to, going back to Director Abicoga, I mean, that's going to be our critical issue, even if the, even if the price is in the ticket, how that, how that revenue is allocated is going to be our issue. So we need to negotiate that on the front end. So there's a fair allocation of that revenue, and it's not going to be based on taps. Because if it's based on taps, generally speaking, we would probably lose in that, in that calculation, just because we have an open system. Others who have a closed system, you're required to have the tap. So we, we just got to be careful how that gets discussed and negotiated.
Thank you. Appreciate the, the updates and, did you have a?
If you're wrapping up, like, yeah, sorry.
No, no, no.
Apologies. Thanks, Chair. Sorry. Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. And I don't want to overindex on this. I mean, I think the point others have made that we should not bank on the big events in 2026 to address the kind of systemic, you know, issues that we're talking about, I think is right. That being said, we are making an extra push, learning from Super Bowl 10 years ago, we have just hired a director for sports and special events in San Jose. In my March budget message, and some of my colleagues here are working with me on this message, we will make some one-time investments in additional marketing and activation. We are pushing very hard to encourage people to fly, stay, and play here in the South Bay because this is where all the, all the action is, where most of the games are. So there is a more concerted and proactive effort to make sure that we're generating as much activity in and around those events as we can, which should improve sales tax revenue a bit, ridership a bit. But I don't think that's going to be the game changer. We do think long-term, there's, there's real opportunity around expanding sports and entertainment programming in the South Bay. In fact, I will be with the Host Committee this weekend representing the region in New Orleans. I'm not going to the game, but Monday, day after the game, I'll be getting the football to bring back. And so I will convey to the Host Committee the comments I heard here and very much understand that on planning for transportation, security, general fundraising, many of us would like more details. And I'm in the same boat, I don't sit on the Host Committee, I'm kind of in the same boat we all are, but I'll convey some of these questions and concerns and certainly report back whatever I can at our next meeting. Did want to just quickly ask on the more systemic issues. Greg, could you say a little more about what we are seeing in the sales tax projections? You referenced that in the presentation, but I didn't, I didn't see the detail, and I apologize if I missed it.
No, no, there wasn't much detail in what I was presenting. I mean, what we're seeing is really an across-the-board reduction from what was anticipated for sales tax, both retail, business-to-business. And I'll speak honestly here, it's kind of surprising to me because I don't think it was expected or anticipated in many cases, but it's being now sustained.
Yeah.
And so now we've seen it for the first six months of the fiscal year. And so the, the question is, how long will it maintain like that and when will it come back? And that's just a question right now, it's just, it's hard to figure out.
Yeah.
So you're going to see, so what I'd mentioned was, we're down about $20 million on the operating budget for sales tax. So for the 76 measure, it's about 14, almost $15 million for the first six months. So the expectation is, if it stays as that is, then you would just extrapolate out for the next six months that we could be $30 to $40 million below budget from a sales tax perspective on the operating side.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's the challenge we're going to face as we move into the next couple of years.
Yeah. And I know on the city, within the city of San Jose, our data indicates the same. We've seen two straight quarters now of very modest declines, and you're not seeing any, any particular sectors to call out there.
Not that I recall.
It's pretty much across the board.
Yeah.
And then to Director Burt's comment about fare box recovery, I'm curious what the agency sees as the opportunity to improve our collection rate? And where are we in terms of number of fare inspectors? How does that staffing compare to historic levels? And is there more opportunity there to just improve our recovery of the fares that should be paid to the agency for a very valuable service we're providing?
Yeah. Not to get too detailed on this, but SSTPNO has, has been seeing a comparative number that is showing ridership increases and then a comparative revenue increase. And those two have not jived really for the last several months. And so there's a recognition there that there's a couple of things that can drive that. So our increase can go, our passenger numbers can go up, we have a lower fare box because of lower, lower fares, passes, whatever the case, or we have what I would refer to as leakage. And so it's that piece that we have to figure out really what that number is and how we can control it. More specifically, specifically to your question, I think right now, unfortunately, there are two fare inspectors.
Two fare inspectors for a system of our size, yeah.
And they would only run on light rail. So they would be on light rail. Now, there's a plan. I know Aston's right behind me, and he's probably ready to just, he's chomping at the bit.
I see that.
But I know that we've got a plan in place to develop some transit patrol, transit security officers into the next fiscal year, which again, that's one of those items when I referred to, issues, questions we're going to have for '26 is how do we build that into the budget and make it happen?
Yeah.
Because there's going to be some trade-offs. So.
And those, sorry, my last question, just to pick up on that, can the people providing security on the system also be checking fares? It's a two for.
That would be the twofold.
Okay.
At least I would expect that.
Yes.
Yes, okay. That's what I would expect.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Greg, I'll just say for now, I really look forward to engaging and having the board support that, support this at a strategic level and really tackling this. And congratulations on the new title.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That wraps us up, and I'll do the chairperson's report and try to be efficient. This is item 5.3. First, I'd just like to, sure, there we go, the Random Light Rail Station TOD Press Conference. And grateful to Vice Chair Mayor Mahon, Director and MTC Commissioner Abicoga, San Jose Council Member Pamela Campos, who spoke, and also appreciate VTA alternate director, Rob Moore, for being there, along with representatives from the county destination home and the city. Was a really great event. And I'll just highlight that this is a really unique, we've now done, moving ahead in some stage with five TOD sites. But what's really exciting about this one is the opportunity to provide for extremely low-income residents to own their own homes. And for, for those of us from affordable housing, this is at the lowest level of area median income. So just translating that, it means a family earning as low as $55,000 per year, that's for a family household, can actually own their own home. It's just unheard of in this valley. So, and grateful for VTA, Jesse O'Malley, and the whole Real Estate Department for partnering with Charities Housing for the 45 townhomes, that is really going to be transformational. And I can tell you from just the comments and interest and questions I received, how transformational this work and this opportunity can be. So really grateful that our agency is, is leading on this front. That takes us to 5.3A, which is an action item to approve the appointments to board standing committees and other committees for 2025. The list of appointments is in your supplemental packet, and I believe we have a slide as well. We do not, and that is not on staff, trust me, yeah. God created the world in six days, and we had a month and about 500 phone calls, and we were still working up to the wire on these committees. So thank you, thank you, staff, for all your work on that. Got very, very intimate with the admin code and our bylaws. So I really do want to thank everyone for their willingness to serve, flexibility, understanding when we had to move some things around to make it work. So with that, we'll take public comment for items on 5.3, which is committee assignments. Do we have any commenters? No, closing public comment. Any questions from colleagues on this?
Just wanted to confirm, we noted that despite what's printed here, I would not be serving on ANF. Is that right?
Yes, we'll have a couple of updates.
We're going to have to make those later.
Yes, yes, but it is noted, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Director, can I make?
Committees, because I tried to get, go through and look at some of the dates, and I just want, if staff can confirm the dates of the committees, because things have moved around quite a bit, and so, just so that we all are sort of in line with the committees, who's on them, and the dates, that would be terrific.
Absolutely, thank you.
And with that, I... And with that, I, do you need a motion?
Yes, we do.
Yes, I'd move the item.
I get a second from Abicoga. Thanks. And we'll do a roll call.
Abicoga.
Aye.
Arenas. I'll come back to you. Candela's.
Aye.
Cohen.
Yes.
Thank you. Foley.
Aye.
Kamai. Montano.
Aye.
Sal.
Aye.
Turner.
Yes.
Weinberg.
Yes.
Mahan.
Aye.
Lopez.
Yes.
Motion passed Chair.
Thank you. And again, thank you to all the directors for then, for your understanding and to all of your offices and staffs as well, for those of you who, who have those. I, I just want to know one thing on the culture change working group and just highlight this committee in particular. I'm really grateful to Directors Abicoga and Candela's for, for joining myself on this committee. And in part, as we heard today from some of the commenters, there's a lot of strong feelings and a lot of history in, in this agency, but also a lot of opportunity right now for us to really move forward on addressing some of the major challenges that, that we have. And so this will be a really key committee and, and it'll be composed of those board member representatives as well as a representative from each bargaining unit and a VTA management appointee. And, and, and again, it's, it's a, it's a working group. And so in, in addition to oversight, my, my expectation, hope is that it'll be a really productive place to make some real progress and, and do some good work on moving our agency forward together with the right folks at the table. So my, my thanks to those folks who, who are joining me on that. With that, we'll move on. That, and again, thank you for that motion. That wraps us up for 5.3 and we'll move on to 5.4, which is a federal update. And we'll have Beverly Green, Chief Government Affairs Officer, introduce this item as, as well as the rest of the team. Thank you for, for joining us today.
Good evening, Chair Lopez, Vice Chair Mahan and Board of Directors. I'm pleased to bring our lobbyists, our federal lobbyists here to give us an update on what is going on in Washington DC. As you know, there have been many changes in the last 18 days and even before that. So let me introduce to you, first of all, this Harry Glenn, who is from Van Scoyak Associates. He is a new face to you, but he has been at Van Scoyak for, since 2014. He spent 19 years as a Chief of Staff for Republican Chairman of the House Appropriations Committee. Okay. Okay. And then next to him is Steve Palmer. You're familiar with Steve Palmer. He has been a federal advocate for VTA since 2010. He helped secure almost a billion dollars in FFGA for the Silicon Valley Berriessa Extension. He has worked in a prior administration and he has been critical to VTA's being able to access federal monies. And then next to him is Alka, who is a Senior Advisor at Cardinal Infrastructure. He spent 23 years in the House of Representatives. He is, he was the Staff Director on Railroads Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Committee and also was a Deputy Staff Director of the Highways and Transit Subcommittee. The person who is not here is Sherry Little, the Managing Partner of Cardinal Infrastructure. She was the FTA Acting Administrator during the Bush Administration. She is advocating currently for 10 CIG projects. And the reason that she is not here is because she was meeting with the transition team for DOT. So with that, I would like to hand this over to Steve Palmer.
Thank you, Beverly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Beverly said, we want to kind of talk about the election, what it means for.
Next.
Yeah, I'm trying to, trying to get there. From button push. Oh.
Let me do it. Okay. Steve, did, did Harry get introduced?
Yes, yes.
Thanks.
Anyway, talk about the election, kind of what, what it means in terms of the margins of who's controlling the House and the Senate. Talk a little bit about the people in Congress who we're dealing with and the ones you know and the ones you don't know yet. Also to the people, new faces in the Trump Administration, some of their priorities and what we're doing on behalf of VTA throughout all of this and advocating for your projects and policies. The first slide is, is pretty self-evident. Republicans are now in control. The margin, the key point here is the margins are very, very slim. And that's going to be important because it takes, in the Senate, it takes 60 votes to pass any kind of legislation. The Republicans now have a 53-vote majority. So they're going to have to work with the Democrats on the majority of the legislation. There's one exception we'll talk about a little bit later is budget reconciliation. That's not something that directly affects VTA today, but it could. And then in the House, they need 217 votes to pass legislation if they, if everyone's there voting in present. Obviously with a 218 to 215 vote margin, it's going to shrink over the next several days because a couple of more of the Republican members will join the Trump Administration. So they're going to have a one-vote margin by, by, within the next couple of days. And then it'll go back up once those special elections occur. But for the time being, it's going to be very, very challenging for the, for legislation to pass. And again, to reemphasize what Beverly said, we've only been, had the Trump Administration in place for the last 18 days. It's been a month since the Republicans were sworn in for the 119th Congress. So a lot is happening. On this next slide, you know these people. They're your delegation. I, I just want to emphasize one thing and then actually two things. One of them is we're fortunate to have a delegation that's very seasoned, very experienced and very good at getting things done. And that includes the House members, including the new Representative Sam Liccardo, a former member of this board who many of you know very well, former Chair. And as well as Senator Schiff, who now has moved into that position, moved from the House to the Senate. The one disadvantage we have is we don't have anybody on the transportation, on the transit committees or appropriations committees. I'm going to let Alka talk next about the committees of jurisdiction. We're fortunate that at least both senators are on the Highway Committee that does oversight for highway or policy issues for highways. But for the time being in this Congress, we're going to have to work through other, get them to, we're engaged with other members of Congress and advocate directly with them. Next slide.
And I'm going to speak on the authorizing committees. These are the committees that set law on for transit policy. The funding committees Harry's going to cover. And House Transportation Committee, Sam Graves has been the Chair for two years now. And Rick Larson's been the ranking member for two years. They will continue forward. The key thing to know about House Transportation Committee, it is by far, without any question, the most bipartisan committee in, in the House. They do generally everything together and rarely break and do partisan stuff. That will be a little different on reconciliation, which will Steve will call it later. But they have a great working relationship and they will fight like crazy behind the scenes and then find a way to come to an agreement. Senate Banking Committee has jurisdiction over transit in the Senate. It's a old historical fact dating back decades. But Senator Tim Scott is the new Chair there. He has a CIG project, a capital investment grant project, same as the BART project here. So we will be working with him on defending the program. Senator Elizabeth Warren is new to the ranking member position in the committee. And her staff on this committee have been around for 15 years and know this project inside now and we all work with all the time. We have listed here the Senate EPW Committee, which just focuses on highways, but that's important in VTA. And, and as Steve said, there are both California senators are on that committee. So we have good representation there.
Thank you, Alka. Hi, it's Harry Glenn. It's nice to be with you. My first visit to San Jose. So thank you for being so welcoming. We had some great meetings today with your staff and I appreciate Beverly, the bringing me up to speed on this great project and your great organization. I, I am a former Chief Staff to a Chairman of the House Appropriations Committee. And we do have some good members on the Appropriations Committee in the new Congress that are good advocates for public transit programs, which will be helpful to some of the things we're going to talk about, excuse me, going forward. The Chairman, the, the new Chairman of this Congress of the House Appropriations Committees, gentleman named Tom Call from Oklahoma. We talked earlier today. He has a CIG project moving forward in Oklahoma. That'd be good to have the Chairman of the Committee interested. Steve Womack is a good friend from Arkansas, is the Chairman of the Subcommittee that funds the Department of Transportation Programs. And then I point out that the media past Chairman of that Subcommittee, Mario Diaz-Balart, also from Florida, has a major project coming forward in the CIG Pipeline 2 down in Miami. So that'll be helpful to us also. On Democrat's side, Rosa Delaro is the returning ranking Democrat on the House Appropriations Committee and a new Subcommittee Chairman on the Transportation Subcommittee's gentleman named Jim Clyburn from South Carolina. On the Senate side, we have tremendous support for public transit. Susan Collins is the new Chair of the Committee from Maine. And her Transportation Subcommittee Chair is Cindy Hyde-Smith from Mississippi. I think somebody mentioned earlier Patty Murray from Washington is the ranking Democrat now on the Senate Appropriations Committee, also a strong supporter of public transit, as is Kirsten Gillibrand from the state of New York. Next slide, Beverly. And then I know you're tracking the Trump Administration's moving relatively quickly and some of the senior-level appointments. One of the very first, the top four Secretaries to be confirmed was Sean Duffy, former member of Congress from Wisconsin as a House Member. He did, does not really have much transportation experience. So one of the goals, I think, for transit agencies like yours will be to educate him about the value and, and the difference between many transportation programs in the country. The Deputy Secretary Steve Bradbury, who served as Chief Counsel at Transportation under the first Trump Administration. The FRA Administrator is David Fink, who's a railroad executive and has experience, deep experience with the rail industry. And the FTA Administrator was just recently announced, Mark, Mark Malinaro, a one-term Congressman from New York State. He was endorsed by the TWU Union and Representative of New York has an interest in transit. So we think he'll be a good appointment and somebody that you all can work with on transit issues. And they continue to wait for an announcement from the Federal Highway Administration for the administrative of that program. And at the White House, then we have some new leadership. Susie Wiles from Florida is the Chief of Staff to the President. I'm sure you may have seen today Russell Vogt, who's the, will be the new OMB Director, which is confirmed today. He was an author of the so-called Project 2025, which does make some serious recommendations we need to pay attention to on transit programs. And then I'm sure you all are following the, the President's creation of the Department of Government Efficiency of the DOGE Commission, which is being run by Elon Musk and his staff. Another organization we need to pay attention to. We talked to staff today about making sure that they don't take any serious action against transit programs. The Trump Administration, I'm sure you're all following this too. As Steve said, we're only 18 days into the new administration. As you may have seen, the Republican House went down to the White House today to talk about the President's top priority, which is extending the 2017 tax reductions before they expire at the end of this year. That'll be one of their first orders of business, along with the budget reconciliation process, which Steve will talk about in a little bit. They continue through the DOGE Commission and other ways to reduce federal spending, regulations and workforce. They continue to issue, issue executive orders related to eliminating the green energy programs of the previous administration. And I'm sure you have all tracked that they issued a new executive order from the Department of Transportation that relates to all DOT grants, loans and contracts, which will prioritize, and they're listed on the slide here. Utilize user pay models, which you were talking about better fare box collection. Direct funding to local opportunity zones, which we're going to talk about, one of your major projects. Flows through a, a large opportunity zone. Preference, as mentioned before, to communities with higher marriage and birth rates, which Alka may talk about in a minute, but it looks like your numbers are good here in the Valley. And require compliance and cooperation with immigration enforcement. But I would say, oh, there's a lot of focus on some of those new priorities. There are other priorities that the new Secretary of Transportation announced in his, in his order and some of which may help some of your projects. One of them is encouraging, being able to support moving workers to their jobs, moving, helping people get to their medical appointments and helping students get to their schools and colleges. So all very important to the programs you run here. In addition, one of their other priorities that they're going to focus on is our programs with strong cost share. So some of the programs we work on, including some of your largest, have very good cost share and should be very attractive to this new administration. In addition to some of the things we've talked about, as you may know, the new administration's ending the Justice 40 and Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Initiatives from the previous administration. And they're already in a process, as you may have read last week, there was a memo issued on Monday, last week ago, Monday, to freeze government contracts and grants. It was rescinded the following day and two courts so far have put a hold on any vestiges of that until further review. So that did create quite a bit of consternation among all federal recipients of grants, including transit agencies across the country. We continue to monitor, make sure the administration doesn't want to terminate the Capital Investment Grant Program, which is the major grant program that funds your large projects. That was a recommendation in the, in the Project 2025. We also want to make sure we monitor, Steve's going to talk a little bit about the upcoming reauthorization of the highway and transit programs that expire at the end of next year. That process is already underway and need to make sure that the Highway Trust Fund remains robustly funded. Finally, the, looking ahead to the legislative agenda for the coming year. Obviously, Congress has not finished its appropriations work for fiscal '25 or halfway through the fiscal, we're going to be halfway through the fiscal year before the next deadline of March 14th comes up. So we continue to watch there. The key thing we're watching for there is to make sure that the capital investment program continues to be funded. That'll be a real indicator that this new administration, the new Congress are committed to continuing to fund that program, which will impact some programs that Alka will talk about a little later. And then they'll immediately roll into the fiscal '26 appropriations process and start that process, which has to be done again by September 30th. Budget reconciliation is a major initiative of this Congress, which is a, a technicality that in the legislation could be moved relatively quickly through the House and the Senate, in particular with the Senate only needing a 51 to 49 majority vote to pass it. And it's something that they can do to make major spending cuts across all programs and also change the tax code. So we'll need to continue to monitor that to make sure that they're not picking out any of the transit programs for further reductions. And then finally, as I mentioned, the reauthorization of the Service Transportation Bill is already started. That legislation will need to be passed by the end of next year. With that, Steve?
And I'd like to talk to you about the BART project and the CIG program's future. As you know, the CIG program is not well-loved by the current administration. It's on the Project 2025 hit list. In first Trump Administration, they did eventually sign 30-plus grant agreements within a CIG program. So they do, the, the, the program is not, people predict that the program was gone and are not correct. The, the first job we have as federal advocates is to protect the program itself. Cardinal Infrastructure is leading an effort with all of our, our red state CIG projects to come and brief the administration and Republicans in Congress and explain to them, remind them that the CIG program is not just a blue state program. It is not just California, New York. There are lots of projects in the middle of the country, Oklahoma, Utah, Texas, Atlanta, Indiana. And so that's our first job, protect the program itself. Second thing is, what do we, how do we protect the BART project and get it funded? First thing you need to know is the, the, the project costs you're going through that process now, that is a great thing for defending the project in Washington DC. One of the problems with not just transit, but all transportation projects is the exploding costs going across the country. It's hitting highways, it's hitting bridges, it's hitting non-transportation projects. It's obviously hitting the BART project here. Being the leader on cutting project costs is a great message to take to DC and the administration. And we're going to turn the BART project into that example. So continue to do that, please. The second thing is, we don't want your project to be the first test case in Trump Administration. That is a terrible idea. We are going to take CIG projects from the red states and bring them in first. So don't be in a rush to get funding for this. Now, the timing of that is a little tricky. Know that when VTA applies for the grant agreement, it's a minimum for more likely six or seven months before that they can possibly get that grant agreement. So, so the application timing is not critical. So don't fret over that, but know that we are working hard to make sure we have red state projects go first and, and decisions made on those, clearing the path for other projects to come.
And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there is public comment on, on this item. Do we have any? Oh, that, that was for this one. Glenn S. Overton. Oh, that was for this one. Glenn S. Overton?
Yeah, I wanted to reiterate about being more transparent on the Phase Two BART. I think I already mentioned that if you would please incorporate in your presentation materials a complete animation of the construction process of BART VTA Phase Two. A complete animation of the customer experience that you expect. A complete animation of any contingencies associated with the BART Phase Two program, such as derailments or fires in that. And also a complete animation of your rationale for single bore versus double bore. I think this was not the item. I wanted to speak on item eight-four, but you called me, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry about that. Thanks. We'll now close public comment and go to any director questions. Yeah, go ahead, Director Cohen.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the report and for the work you're doing on our behalf in Washington. I don't know if I have any question necessarily, except that I just want to make a couple of comments. I guess color me skeptical that, that normal, that the kind of normal advocacy that we are used to doing will work under, with this administration. I'm not, I think it's important for people in your role for us to be optimistic and to try as best you can and have a good strategy. And it sounds like you have a good strategy that is the best we can do. But we have to go into it with eyes wide open that this is not normal times. And it's not, I'm not convinced that it matters who, so far, I mean, we'll see how it goes. It's early, but so far it doesn't look like Congress cares to do its job. So who is the chair of the chair of the committees, you know? And whether they care about transit, to me, is less important than what the Department of Transportation cares about transit. But I just think we ought to be aware and prepared for worst-case scenario. It's obviously a great idea to go forward with red state projects first and then make the case that projects everywhere deserve funding. But I, you know, I suspect there's, there's going to be a lot more scrutiny on certain types of certain projects in certain places than other places. I did want to ask your question about, a question, a follow-up question. You commented about that unusual idea that birth rate matters in funding transit, where it really should be population and transit needs and not necessarily birth rate. But you said we seem to be in good shape, but I want to make sure we're aligned on this. It's not clear to me that that's the case. Do we have data that says that we actually are in a good place on birth rate?
Yeah, it's a great question. One, I share your skepticism about times not being normal. I think that's going to change over the next six months to a year, like the first 18 days aren't normal ever. But I do see that changing. So on the birth rate question, it's common sense's data, so everyone knows it. The thing we don't know is what they're going to measure exactly in terms of the geographic area. If you're looking at the state of California, your birth rate and marriage rates aren't very good compared to the rest of the country. If you're looking at San Jose metropolitan area, you're now in the average and you're fine. So this, of course, is a transit project that doesn't affect the entire state, it's the metro area. We should make a strong argument that that's what matters.
And if I may, I'll add, you know, we all share your skepticism. We don't know what's going to happen because this is so far 18 days that we've never seen before. But we're realizing that, you know, you have a team that each of us individually have secured full-funding grant agreements, small-starter grant agreements. We know how to work with that process in Washington. We also have worked with your staff, as well as some of the, you know, talked to some of the board members about developing, you know, bringing in a stronger element of the private sector into this discussion so that the Trump administration understands it's not just a liberal democratic part of the country, but in fact, there are companies that benefit from this. And we're trying to develop, you know, strategies that ensure we have people who they know come in and talk about the project as well. So we're trying, realizing the unique situation that we're facing, we're trying to meet those needs as they head towards us.
Yeah, I like, that's a strong answer because I think that's the strategy, that these are going to be red state companies with contracts, they're going to benefit from the work we're doing here. This isn't just about us benefiting here. So obviously, I'm happy to hear that that'll be a focus. Obviously, past success may not be any indication of future success, as long as we don't know that we have a good faith actor on the other side of the table. I think throughout American history, we have, but we'll see. See, I'm appreciative that you're fighting the fight for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mahin, Vice Chair.
Thanks. Well, I'll echo Director Cohen's thanks, and I do think it's a sensible strategy, given the circumstances. I thought you highlighted two things that were just worth repeating that made a lot of sense to me. One was to lean into the effort that we have to make to cut costs and balance our budget and really emphasize the trade-offs we're making, that we're making tough decisions and we're finding ways to be more efficient and to bring down cost. And that's work we all are engaged in and have more to do. But I think just emphasizing the importance of that and that we can highlight that for the administration makes a lot of sense. The other point about not rushing to be the first in line, obviously, is very sensible. Flipside, though, is the longer it takes, we know time is our greatest enemy in terms of cost escalation. So that's something I think we need to grapple with and try to understand. Is there a way to not continue to see the relentless cost escalation we've seen? If we do have to move a little slower in terms of our timing for, in the pipeline. To that end, is there any interest on the part of federal government to help us reduce costs? And I know that may sound crazy, but are there federal or state process requirements that we could live without that they might actually want to help us waive if we could move faster and be an example of a project that's supporting, at least, you know, what I've heard is a priority around permit streamlining or whatever else. And so, I mean, what are the, are there any opportunities on that front?
So I'll just start by saying, a lot of the things you're asking about haven't happened yet, but they are probably going to happen both in the legislative process, as well as through the executive orders that the President's signing. Also, too, next year, the Surface Transportation Bill has to be reauthorized. That's where Congress will really start to tackle some of the streamlining procedures of permitting and environmental review. Because I think there's a widespread recognition about both parties that it takes too long to get projects approved, and that does cost, cost escalation.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we'll look forward to hearing your insights going forward on where there may be opportunities to actually cheer on reasonable reforms that the administration's pursuing in terms of streamlining process if it helps us move faster or bring down costs. I mean, I just, I think we have to be very pragmatic and find opportunities where there's some common ground or alignment to really, you know, highlight those. So thank you again for the work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You have other directors with questions?
Yeah, yes, Bert. Thank you, and thank you for the update. I want to follow on to Mayor Mahin's kind of comments there. Couple of the takeaways are that we had previously been rushing to try to get our full-funding grant agreement application in. And that was actually conflicting with some of the efforts that we wanted to do to pursue the full range of cost-reduction opportunities. A combination of design and construction method, cost-reduction opportunities at different levels in the, of the depth of those, as well as opportunities on negotiations or selections of vendors that might be very fundamental changes to the project. We now, by this change in circumstances, see a greater alignment between those. We're no longer kind of artificially pushing ourselves to get that FFGA application in before we're really ready to do so. So that tension has diminished. And we'll hear probably more from Tom McGuire later in his report on the whole series of categories where we're looking at every opportunity to reduce the costs. And I just want to, nevertheless, despite kind of the cautious optimism that you have expressed that this, these programs will not be as drastically affected as what we've seen in the first few weeks of the new administration, we certainly have to recognize that the degree to which this administration is taking a radical approach to federal programs exceeds even the apprehensions that almost everybody had. We don't know what'll shake out. As you said, this is not the same at this point in time as some of the other initiatives they have. And what will hopefully return to a more normal congressional negotiation process may very well prevail, and we get somewhat of a return to normal processes. But nevertheless, our risk level has had a significant new dimension in the recent weeks. And we already have a lot of project risks, and we just have to recognize the degree to which this is now in play, as well as, as you said, the unknowns that we have about it. And we'll, we'll learn more in the coming weeks and months while we're hammering away at these cost reductions. Thanks.
I would just remind everyone that the President right now is enjoying his honeymoon and getting in the way of lots of stuff that aren't legal. Courts are starting to weigh in to change that, and at some point, Congress reasserts itself. They always do.
And I'll add, if I may, one of the reasons we kind of went through the litany of who the chairman are and the appropriations process is even though, and one of the things I tried to highlight on the first slide was the margins in the House and Senate are very narrow, very, very narrow. And later this year, when it comes to the FY '25 appropriations bill in March, and then again later this year on the next year, the '26 fiscal year budget, the Democrats are going to be called upon to support something. And out of that, they will get to be able to ask for concessions. One of the things we want to do is engage with the Democrats to make sure they know that this project and the capital investment grant program is a priority.
Thank you, and thank you, Director Bert. I think we had Director Sell next. Is that correct?
So thank you for your report. I like your strategy of using the red states as going forward first and then seeing how we can leverage off that. I also like the story of, you know, California is the far, far fifth-largest economy in the world. California provides funds to help the red states. So the better financially that California does in the future, the better that it positions the United States. So those kind of arguments are great. So I was just wondering, in the first Trump administration, does that give you any insights into what was successful back then? To give you ideas of what might be successful in this second Trump administration to get through grants for VTA?
Lots of insights. Love to talk about that, not in this setting.
Okay.
But, I mean, I think, Steve, I mean, the first Trump administration was a little slow, maybe the first two years, at actually moving projects, in this case, through the CIG pipeline. But actually, along the way, they, during the last two years, they did move projects. I'm not sure of the final count, but they did move projects through the pipeline. So it wasn't, they weren't going to do any projects. I think it took a bit of a learning curve. They also never had a confirmed FTA administrator. They had an acting during the entire time. I think the nominee here has a good chance of being confirmed and might be a good advocate. So I mean, if you look for lessons learned from the first four years, slow start, strong finish. Again, trying to add more optimism to the, to the situation.
I don't recall the numbers, but the Trump administration actually moved more CAG projects than the Biden administration.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for your work in supporting VTA.
Thank you. Director Condals?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair. I just wanted to also express my appreciation for the update. I know, I can hardly see you, but that's okay. You know, I think, I think there's absolute truth to our strategy with regards to letting others go first, be the test case, showing, yes, the cost-saving mechanism that we're taking, or the fact that we are one of those, those few projects that have contributed substantial amount of local funds, whether it's taxes or other statewide programs that have contributed to PSV, too. But, you know, I want to ask about, specifically about the EO that was issued earlier this week with regards to the user pay models, the higher marriage and birth rates. And then, but the biggest caveat that I, that I see, and I'm curious your thoughts, is with regards to the compliance cooperation piece with immigration. And I mean, how, how do you envision us, you know, tackling that piece where, you know, what do we, you know, have to do with that? And so, so I'm curious to hear your perspective on that and see how we can get over that hurdle, considering how important, how vital our immigrant community here is.
No, it's a great question. And honestly, not trying to dodge the question, but we don't know that what the Trump administration's really going to propose in terms of how they're going to implement this. Obviously, we know that the priority, the President, biggest priority, rather, is dealing with the immigration issue. But what will that mean in terms of implementing the grant programs and how they will award those grants? That's really to be determined yet, and unfortunately, we just don't have an answer yet.
Yeah, no, and I don't expect you to. But I just hope that as we come into, as we come into the next six months, eight months, and we see a settling, and hopefully, knock on wood, I'm a glass half-empty in this situation. And those of you who know me, I'm a glass half-full, and majority of the way I see things. I'm, there's a lot of work ahead, but I trust that we will get great counsel and hopefully see some of our projects move forward. And yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you, Director. Yes, Director Weinberg. And then Director Montana, are you next? You have your hand up? Okay, great. Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you very much for that presentation. Like my colleagues, I really appreciate your advocacy for us in Washington with the federal government. And I'm sure that when there is a change of administration, especially a change of party, it makes things very difficult and challenging for you, and with this administration, probably more so than usual. I also know there's a lot of unanswered questions, and you don't know which way the government is going to pivot or actually enact some of the policies that are being directed from the President. I trust that you've been gaming it out in your mind, how you're going to attack sort of different approaches as it become necessary. And I'm not going to ask you about that. But I am curious if, given sort of the anticipated sea change in how this administration is going to look at funding transit projects, is there an opportunity for us to work with other transit agencies who also have very large projects? Or do you see it more that the administration is going to maybe pit agencies against one another to sort of prove themselves in a beauty contest, that this project is worthy, that project maybe should be on the back burner? I'm just, I'm just curious what your thoughts are in how we can work with other agencies, or if we should even try.
The CAG program by law doesn't compare projects to each other. It's, there's a set criteria in federal law, you have to meet that criteria. So I don't think they're going to do that. I do think that the Trump administration will be transactional in how they look at each of these projects. And that'll require us to bring the white people forward to support the project.
And let me just add to that. So VTA is a part of a consortium of other transit agencies across the nation that are vested in the capital investment grant group. So we are talking to our colleagues about what we can do to make sure this program continues forward.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that. Thank, thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you. Let's go to Director Montana.
Thank you so much for coming to Silicon Valley. You know, I'm glad that you're here and advocating for us, fighting for us in Washington, D.C. You know, during the inauguration, I seen a lot of high-tech folk there. I mean, this is Silicon Valley, and you mentioned something about partnerships, that they want to see, you know, some type of partnerships with matching funds and so forth. So do you feel that we can use the high-tech card to try to leverage some of that funding?
Well, I don't know if, certainly, we're interested in anyone from the technology. Well, I don't know if, certainly, we're interested in anyone from the technology industry who's supportive of this project, who we can engage to articulate that support to the Trump administration. Absolutely. That's kind of part of our strategy about bringing in, you know, building upon the private sector, bringing in local developers, bringing in other people who will benefit from the project. But we also, you know, we want to make sure there's, you know, one of the things that this administration is likely to move towards, as well as public-private partnerships. And to the degree that this project can engage private sector entities to help address some of those costs, that's probably going to be a salable point to them as well. So,
I think so too.
That hasn't necessarily come to the forefront yet, but there is one thing we were talking about, that Trump won, first Trump administration, that was something they prioritized several years ago in the first administration.
Yeah, I think, you know, he did have a lot of high-tech folk in his inauguration. And to me, that's, I think we should use that to our advantage to form those partnerships. And, you know, it's not what you know, it's who you know. So, thank you so much for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thanks much, Director Turner.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm one of the statements you made. If I heard you right, I just want to confirm that you had mentioned that the Trump administration in its first four years approved more CIG programs than the Biden administration.
Yeah.
Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
And part of that is just timing of the projects. But it does show that they did support CIG projects and didn't hold back.
Thank you. Really appreciate the interest on this and from the board. I think we'll continue to have interest, but thank you for the presentation. Look forward to having that support and partnership going forward.
Mr. Chairman, just one, Director Foley asked a question earlier about the federal funding for the major events that you have coming up. We did have a discussion with the staff today about that. And as we talked about, Congress is still trying to finish their appropriations bills for the current year that they're in. There is some moving pieces that may try and provide some additional support, security support and other support for FIFA and the Super Bowl and other things. So, we'll continue to work that and work with your staff to make sure they're updated. So, we are aware, we were made aware of that today and we'll continue to work on that.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that back to the conversation. And there are, FIFA is occurring all over the country in red and blue states. So, I'm hoping that whatever, if anything, has come up from the federal government in relation to security or transportation, that it's evenly applied across the board. Do you feel that will be the case?
I do. And there's a, it was a bipartisan letter in December, signed, I think, two of your congressional delegation members signed the letter to the Appropriations Committee asking for funding. It was a bipartisan letter. I think they're reissuing another letter. I know the U.S. Conference of Mayors is working through circulating a letter to Congress. So, they are making a significant push. And we want to work with your staff to make sure that if that push is successful, that the funds in part flow down to VTA.
Thanks much. Any other comments? Again, thanks for the interest on this. And thanks for the presentation. We'll now go on to,
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go on to the consent agenda, which is item 6.1 through 6.0. And these are items that will be taken in one motion. For, and we want to make sure we have the mics over there. Are there any colleagues who wish to pull an item off consent? No, if not, any abstentions or recusals? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Or I'm sorry, let's do public comment first. We have a public comment on consent.
There are no requests to speak, Chair.
We have no one online.
Thank you. Closing public comment. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Turner and Foley. Could we have the roll call?
Yes, Chair. Abicoga absent. Arenas?
Yes.
Thank you. Candelaus?
Yes.
Cohen, Foley?
Aye.
Heme, Montano?
Aye.
Sell?
Aye.
Turner?
Yes.
Weinberg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mahan?
Aye.
Chairperson Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passed, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item seven, which is closed session. And the description of these two items will be noted on the screen. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the item on closed session, item 7.1A and B?
There are no requests to speak in the room or in the Zoom room. Thank you.
Okay. Closed public comment, and our closed session will be in the back room. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Oh, great. Even up here. They boosted it too. Great. We're coming back into open session. Do we, are we getting like? Okay. We're now back to the regular agenda and items 8.1 through 8.4. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to report out closed session.
Thank you, Chair. The board did not take any reportable action in closed session on 7.1A and 7.1B.
Thank you. And that brings us to item 8.1, which authorizes the general manager and CEO to direct staff to pursue an increased amount of bond financing. So, we'll hear from Mike Smith, Finance and Investment Manager, and Greg Richardson, Deputy General Manager.
Okay. So, I'm Mike Smith. This is item 8.1. So, at the October 3rd board meeting, the property at 488 Almaden was selected as VTA's new headquarters building. $25 million was identified for yard improvements and amenities, totaling $135 million of project costs. Staff was directed to initiate a bond financing process, which is underway. At today's meeting, the acquisition of the property at 70 North Second Street was approved and adding an estimated amount of $15 million of additional project cost, which includes the acquisition plus any needed improvements for a revised project cost of around $150 million. The size of the bond issue is being capped at $160 million, inclusive of finance charges, but maybe less depending on the final cost. Annual debt service is currently estimated at around $10.7 million. The bonds will be secured by the Transit Fund's 1976 sales tax. It's anticipated that the Transit Oriented Development Fund will use lease revenues to reimburse the Transit Fund for debt service. Next month, at the March board meeting, bond documents will be presented for approval and authorization to issue the bonds. Well, I guess we're supposed to be pushing the button here.
Yep. I just want to make sure that slide was shown, so that everyone saw it.
Right. That's the important slide. So, this slide shows the acquisition of the 48 and of Second Street and the additional costs and the financing charges. And this is a recommendation, which in short is adding $15 million to the prior authorization and directs a cap of $160 million on the financing. That's the conclusion.
So, if I could just, just to paraphrase this, so we're all on the same page. So, again, 48 and Almaden, for those who are not here, board approved that acquisition and at the same time, approved the bond issue, for us to move forward with the bond issuance. At that time, we capped it at $135 million. The action today with the Second Street location, along with adding in some financing costs to make sure that we have coverage for the overall bond issuance. So, we're asking for that incremental amount of 20, what would be $25 million to get to a total cap of 160. And that's the cap of the issuance that would be happening, but most likely, it's going to be lower than 160. And that's for us to acquire then, the second building.
Thank you so much. We'll now go to public comment. Do we have any comment on this item? No, closing public comment. Do you have any questions for staff from the board? Yes, Director Cohen.
I noticed on the previous slide, slide three, there's a line item for River Oaks demo. Can you just describe what that line item is?
Yeah. So, as a part of the relocation of headquarters, it frees up transit-oriented development to happen on our existing headquarters at River Oaks. And so, that number is an estimate of what we think it may cost to demo that site and prepare it for future development.
So, demoing a portion of the site in preparation for a future development project, but using this allocation now to pay for that?
That's right.
Portion of the project. Okay. I look forward to learning a little bit more about what the short-term and long-term plans are. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Not seeing other comments. Can I get a motion in a second for this item?
So moved.
Thank you. Foley, was that Candelaus? Yes, thank you. And we can do voice vote now, right, Elaine? Okay. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that item passes. Thank you. Thank you, staff. That brings us to 8.2, which is a development management agreement for future VTA headquarters. It authorizes the general manager and CEO to enter into a development management agreement with EQ Management for future tenant improvements at 488 South Almaden Boulevard. And we'll have Jesse O'Malley, Director of Real Estate and TOD, and Greg Richardson for this item.
Great. Good evening, Chair Lopez and Director. My name is Jesse O'Malley Salis, VTA's Director of Real Estate and Transit Oriented Development. The item before you tonight is an action item, and it's related to the prior October VTA board approval to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for VTA's new headquarters. Staff's recommendation for your consideration is for the board to provide authority for the general manager to enter into a development management agreement, or DMA, with EQ Management LLC in the amount of up to $43.4 million for the build-out and completion of necessary tenant improvements for the future VTA headquarters, the site located at 488 South Almaden Boulevard in San Jose, California. In October of 2024, this board authorized the general manager to enter into the purchase and sale agreement for 488. At the time of the approval, the board reviewed all moving costs, totaling a budget of $43.4 million for tenant improvements, including paint and carpet, furniture purchase, required building updates, moving expenses, and the build-out of an onsite board meeting facility. At the same meeting, the board took action to approve the funding plan for both acquisition and improvements of the bond issuance that would be paid back with TOD cash flow over time. And you just updated that in your last action just before this. In late November, VTA entered into the purchase and sale agreement and wrapped its due diligence of the property in late January. In the due diligence phase, we reviewed the Phase 1 environmental report, a preliminary title report, commissioned and received an ALTA survey, conducted a structural analysis of the building, and reviewed a building conditions report and cost estimates for required improvements. And I'm pleased to report that the analysis conducted confirmed that the budget we presented you was sufficient to move forward with our plans at 488. Since executing the purchase and sale agreement, we've been working on a design and tenant improvement governance document to make sure that we can move forward with the seller's management team to deliver. Thanks. I've got one here. Thank you, thank you. That we can deliver the necessary build-out for our future headquarters in an efficient and cost-effective manner. With this agreement, VTA will maintain approval of all contracts related to design, construction, and the move. The development management agreement incorporates and maintains VTA policies on prevailing wages and labor peace amongst other VTA policies. The final development management agreement will include an access and escrow agreement to further govern distribution of VTA's approved design and improvement costs throughout the escrow account. And I wanted to share you, with you, a brief update on our project timeline, so you can see the prior actions and activities that we've been doing to this point with the original board approval in October, due diligence and site analysis. Up until this point tonight, we're here asking for your approval of the development management agreement. If we receive that, we'll be able to move into the design phase of this project, submit for permits in June, with construction beginning late summer, and construction ending in January of '26, with a move-in anticipated in February of 2026. The recommendation, or staff recommendation, before you tonight is to authorize the general manager to enter into the development management agreement with EQ Management LLC in an amount up to $43,400,000 for the build-out and completion of necessary tenant improvements at the future headquarters site located at 488 South Almaden Boulevard in San Jose, California.
Thank you. Do we have a public comment on this item?
We do not have any requests to speak, Chair.
Thank you. That's closed public comment. And do we have any questions on this item?
Is it,
Sorry, Director Montano.
Is it seismically retrofitted?
Yeah, this building, when we conducted the due diligence, was built in an era post-the-North Ridge seismic requirements that occurred after the North Ridge earthquake. So, the findings are that this building is in really good shape seismically for the activity that we'll be doing on site.
And then parking, is there enough parking for our employees?
Yes. There's 2.9 parking spaces per thousand. The total parking count is 1157, 87, in that range. Today, at River Oaks, at our highest peak occupancy, we park at roughly about 450 stalls. And so, what that means is we're going to have excess at 488, and that becomes a revenue-generating opportunity for VTA for renting for events and things like that for the convention center nearby.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Director Sell.
So, is buying this building more economical than renovating the current River Oaks?
Yes. So, at the October board action item, we did an analysis of what it would cost us to stay at River Oaks and to renovate versus purchasing versus renting. We shared that analysis. But one of the things that I'll share on top of the cost to renovate River Oaks, which would be significant and in the range of our purchase price for this building, is that we would lose out on the opportunity to develop 17.7 acres at our existing headquarters site. And we anticipate over $1 billion in revenue on that site from transit-oriented development.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have other questions? Okay. If not, then I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Motion?
Thank you. Sell and Cohen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes. And thank you to staff. Item 8.3 is to approve the updated VTA land use and development policy. And we'll hear from Robert Swerke, Principal Transportation Planner, Larissa Sanderfair, Transportation Plan Two, and Deborah DeGang, Chief Planning Officer, to present this item.
This is how we find out the names aren't on the backside, too. We can't figure out where to sit. So, pleased to be here with you today. I'm Deborah DeGang. I'm the chief of planning. And we wanted to come to talk to you about the fact that we've updated our land use and development review policy. This is a very important role we play as a congestion management county transportation agency with all 16 of our member agencies to both provide advice and guidelines on land use policy, but we also review major developments. So, I'm going to turn it over to my staff to introduce themselves and to present this item.
Thank you, Deborah, and good evening, Chairperson and members of the board. And my name is Robert Swerke. And my name is Robert Swerke, and I'm a principal planner here at VTA in the Planning Division, and I'm joined by Larissa Sandifer. And we are going to just walk through this very briefly. Thank you for taking a few minutes this evening. So this is an action item to consider approving an updated version of the Land Use and Development Review Policy. And as Deborah mentioned, one of the hats that we wear at VTA is we're the County Congestion Management Agency. And in that CMA role, we help promote the integration of land use and transportation planning. And that includes managing this development review program and related work that we do. So the Land Use and Development Review Policy was originally adopted in 2019. It provides a framework for VTA's role in this area, the way we work with your own jurisdictions. And what this means for your jurisdiction is this helps guide VTA staff's efforts when we, for instance, review and comment on major development projects and plans. Or for instance, sometimes we will serve on a technical committee or a working group for a general plan update, an area plan, you know, a specific plan that your jurisdiction may be advancing. So it, this policy helps set expectations and provide guidance for agency staff and the development community as they work with VTA in this role. So briefly, this policy updates some language. It streamlines things. It incorporates equity focused principles, and it removes some procedural content that we had in the previous policy to improve clarity. And my colleague Larissa will discuss it in further detail.
Thanks, Rob. Hi, everyone. My name is Larissa Sandifer. I'm a transportation planner on the land use team, and I'll be walking through the rest of the presentation. I'll be going over each guiding principle and then also discussing next steps. So the first guiding principle is to advance equity. This is a new addition from the original policy. Equity is a guiding principle, and then it's also woven through the policy update as a whole. VTA is committed to providing equitable access to transportation services. Key strategies for this guiding principle include following Universal Design Guidelines and also encouraging local jurisdictions to engage underserved communities in the planning process. The next guiding principle is to build effective partnerships. The graphic on the right shows that VTA only controls part of the transportation system. This highlights the importance of collaborating with local jurisdictions. This guiding principle only has minor updates from the original policy. One change to the updated policy is VTA supports transit supportive policies in addition to sustainable development. The next guiding principle is to increase ridership and support fast, frequent, safe, and reliable transit service. A key strategy here is to make transit connections easy, convenient, and seamless. This guiding principle only has minor updates from the original policy. One change is that it identifies specific comfort and safety elements like lighting and benches and other amenities at transit stops. The next guiding principle is to encourage transit supportive development in close proximity to transit. A key strategy includes supporting local jurisdictions and developer efforts to increase density near transit. This guiding principle is a minor update from the original policy. And one addition encourages, includes encouraging new growth, not even at VTA's frequent network, but also at other agencies' rail stations like BART and Caltrain. And then the last guiding principle is to prioritize sustainable travel behavior. This helps reduce submissions, decreases vehicle mile travels, and supports Vision Zero's safety goals. A key strategy here is to utilize VTA's Community Design and Transportation Manual. This is a manual that's fully online on VTA's website, and it includes design, policy, and implementation guidance to help integrate land use and transportation. Again, this is a pretty minor update from the original policy for this guiding principle. But one addition is that we provided more detail to transportation demand management measures to help shift users away from single occupancy vehicles. So for the recommendation and next steps, this is an action item. Staff recommends that the board approve the updated VTA land use and development review policy. We did take this item to our Technical Advisory Committee and Policy Advisory Committee last month, and they were supportive of the update. Staff will continue to enhance our land use and development review efforts, and we plan to bring informational updates to the committee and the board periodically. That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions and comments. Thank you.
None, Chair.
Sorry. Thank you. No public comment, so closing that. Do you have any questions from colleagues on the center? Yes, Director Foley.
Thank you. Just a quick question regarding principle number three, increase ridership and support fast, frequent, safe, and reliable transit service. I'm thinking about our transit first policy, and where does our transit first efforts go? How are they going with our adjoining cities and other jurisdictions?
I can address that. So yes, this is, this is very much aligned with our efforts to do a transit first policy. So I'm very happy to report that in the southern part of our county, Gilroy has approached us about adopting the transit first policy, so we're very pleased with that. And they've really used the city of San Jose's policy. We've been using that as a template. And the way that my staff put it is they took the city of San Jose's policy and adopted all the most ambitious parts of it, so we're really pleased with that. And then we're using that to draft a template or guidance that we're going to take to all of the agencies within the county.
That's wonderful. Having a transit first policy means that our transit system will move quicker and more efficiently and make it more attractive for people to get out of their cars because they can move faster through the system.
And for our staff, one of, completely agree. And for our staff, one of the biggest things it means is that it communicates to staff of that city or jurisdiction that yes, their elected officials support transit first, because sometimes they get mixed messages. So it makes a huge difference. So thank you.
Great, thank you. And I will move approval of the item.
Sorry, thank you. Yes, Director Abbe Koga.
Thank you, Chair. I thank you very much. I appreciate this. One of my concerns is in light of the federal situation. Is there any concern about that, frankly, with using words like equity and that would put us?
That is a lens that we are now having to look at things through. So this really is by adopting this, what you're really doing is authorizing us as staff to work with communities, to implement land use policies, to implement different types of recommendations to encourage more development near transit and multimodal transportation access. We would do that using equity at the forefront. This tool does not go to the federal government. It is not something that we use to solicit funding.
Okay, great.
And or at least we won't in the next couple of years.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate the sensitivity.
Appreciate it. No one's listening, right?
Thank you. Let's go to Director Montana and then Director Weinberg.
Thank you, Chair. So you mentioned that you want to develop, you want to encourage development near transit. However, what if there's land that is industrial and, and the city wants to preserve that industrial? What are your stances on that?
So we have some really good details. As Larissa mentioned, we have the, why do I keep forgetting what CDT?
Community Design and Transportation.
And so what a big part of that is, is that working with local jurisdictions. We know that 100% development can't happen right next to our frequent network, but we can work with jurisdictions to say, when there's a choice, when there are options, you know, please, here are the reasons why it makes sense to focus on where we have our frequent transit network. That's not everywhere. Here are reasons why you can focus in a way that encourages pedestrian bicycle. And then recognizing that if there's a reason why a development, a non-industrial development needs to go into industrial area, that there's an understanding upfront that that likely means that we're not going to be able to serve that by transit and why. Again, we have a limited number of operational dollars. If we spread, you know, that piece of taffy to go more this way, it's got to retract from somewhere else. And so by, but a big part of our goal is to have that conversation early in the process, so we're not too far down the development process. And then to answer further part of your question, and that what we would encourage is to keep those industrial or lower, lower travel uses where there is less transit service.
Right. As you mentioned, that's, you know, it, it all depends on the this surplus or the taxes, you know, tax base. So I do know that light industrial does provide more sales tax revenues for cities in the long run than, than housing, so that would be that trade off.
So one, so one of the other things that, that we did not touch on in this board memo, but that we are doing this year is having a more comprehensive look of what we're doing on the area of transportation demand management. So there may be areas like that, that we can look at a multifaceted TDM program, not just really on transit service and look at, yes, you are going to want to do development there. What can we do to offset some of the travel impacts from that?
Yeah, I just, I guess my concern, I just don't want our local control to be taken away. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
If I could just briefly add too, one thing that we didn't mention in the presentation too, is that we hold a series of periodic coordination meetings on land use and transportation matters with most of the cities in the county, really all the ones that have active development. We also have a quarterly meeting with all jurisdictions on this topic. And we, for instance, have actually, we meet with your staff in Milpitas, and we have spoken about these challenges, for instance, near the Alder Light Rail Station of preserving, that's probably what you're thinking about. And we definitely make sure to understand the context so that, you know, comments we might make and so forth are respectful of, you know, cities priorities in this area, too.
I, I think one last thing I want to say is, is that we do use the Community Design Transportation Manual, but we're also aware that we're also very in tuned of what, where bicycle plans are going, things like that, and making sure that we're continuing to promote bicycle facilities, safe walking facilities that weren't there previously. So we will comment on a lot of those things as well. Or if there is a bus stop, even in those areas there are bus stops that we actually promote that they have some amenity or able to provide things like that. So we do ask for things even in the, even in the, depending on where it is and how, how it focuses on other parts of the transportation system, not just buses.
Thank you. Director Weinberg.
Thank you. And actually, my question was very similar. Whereas this policy looks very good to me in terms of promoting transit, I don't see anything in there about complete streets. I don't see anything in there about safe routes to school. And, and those could be very important. Take a proposed development like Valco and Cupertino. That's right along Stevens Street, which I believe is, is a county maintained road. So, so having components that are not just transit related seems to me a very important part of what the policy should be, and I just don't see anything about that in here. Are there, are there other policies that would be equal to this that would come into play? How just, how, how would those other, how would complete streets and safe routes to school take, come into play here?
I can speak to that a little bit, and you know, my colleagues can certainly add. I'll, I'll point out that the, the fifth of the, I believe it is the fifth of the policies does speak more to the holistic, the kind of the overall transportation system that you're speaking of and actually with, which the general managers meant, just mentioned, you know, complete streets. We actually, based on a comment in committees, we also expanded to make sure that when we're talking about complete streets, we're talking about sustainable and green street design. We don't, I think, have a specific reference to safe routes to school in here, but rest assured through our bicycle pedestrian program, we work actively with local jurisdictions on safe routes to school, you know, access to transit, safe access transit, and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that, that Rob or the Development Review Team does is that they actually, if we have a bicycle plan that we have or a safe route to school, if we've worked with someone, we will make sure that those are our comments back to the city on a development review. So we're able to take all that in. It's a very coordinated effort among everything that's going on within the agency and our response to, to how we can work better. So we actually will bring those comments forward in the development review.
And I will also add, I really appreciate these comments for, for those of us who are on city councils. I mean, obviously, when land use comes up, we're, we're, we're gonna pay close attention. So I, I would actually request the conversation that we're having right now, Carolyn and for Beverly as well, as we're planning the orientation workshops, that we, I think a lot of this information is there, but just pulling it out a little bit different way of thinking through some of those implications of land use throughout the agency, so we can get that full picture. Because obviously it comes up here, but there's a lot of other ways in which that's exercised. I think that ultimately helps, you know, is providing resources to a lot of us rather than mandates. But I, I, I think can be presented, you know, I'm hearing, these are good questions and topics to follow up on, so I appreciate it. I don't see any other comments at this time, so we do need a motion for this item. Do you have a motion in a second? Oh, thank you. Great, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, thank you. And thank you so much to the planning team and for your presentation. Really appreciate it. That brings us to eight point four, which is VTA's Bart Silken Valley Phase Two Extension Project. Tom McGuire, Chief Capital Mega Project Secretary Officer, will provide a brief report. And Sarah Wilson, BSV Two Construction Director, thank you.
Good evening, Directors. Thanks for the opportunity to be here to give you an informational update on progress we're making on Bart Silken Valley Phase Two. And what, there's no action before you tonight, but there is a lot of, there's a lot going on within the BSV Two project, and it's happening within the context that our federal partners told you about an hour or two ago. But I'm going to talk here about giving you a little bit more detail on some of the topics that we touched on in January and that you asked for more detail about, particularly in the areas of cost savings. But also Sarah's going to give an update on how the work that you authorized with your action on December 6th to get started on the launch structure at the West Portal is going, because that work is underway right now.
So let's start with, I think, the three big questions facing the program. Many of you have used words like viability and path forward for BSV Two, and I want to state very clearly what the three things that are going to need to be true for us to truly successfully move this program forward in, in the next couple of years. The first is the cost saving exercise, which we've been working with all of you and many of your constituents, and especially within our team on, over the last few months. We need to find ways to cut the overall cost of the BSV Two project, which is currently estimated at $12.75 billion by at least $700 million, and ideally a number as high as $1.2 billion. The cost saving exercise is central to not just framing the project successfully for our, our federal partners, as Alka said in his presentation earlier, but it's also important to making sure the budget's in balance and we have a path forward. The second key thing is making sure that the contractors working for us, and particularly the contractor, Qit Shea Trailer, who's working on our biggest tunneling contract, that either Qit or another contractor is able to work with us at a price that is affordable and within the project budget. And we'll talk a little bit more about the contract task force that this board asked, asked to form last fall and the progress we're making there. And then finally, we need to, we will need to come to a full funding grant agreement with the federal government before we large, we award that large tunneling contract, which we call Contract Package Two. So let's start with the first question, which is the cost savings work. So when we were here in December, you saw the numbers that are in the next to last column. It's titled Cost Savings as of 12/6/2024. Uh, 2024, sorry. And we were looking at the first two levels of cost savings. And I want to remind everyone that these are, these are topics in category one that are completely within our current environmental clearance. Or in category two items that are, would require a fairly simple reassessment and not a major change to our NEPA record of decision. The good news on this chart is that those level one cost savings that we were, that we worked through throughout the fall do add up to a significant amount of money. Again, we're targeting over $700 million of cost savings. And those first items, which I won't repeat here, but we talked about them in depth at the board workshop in late 2024, do add up to over $300 million. So that, that's, that's a good foundation. The next set of, the next set of cost savings, which are labeled as level two on this slide, again, these are not final numbers, but I, I heard very clearly from many of you that you wanted to see our work in progress. So these are the items that we're working on right now with a goal to come back by April with a, with much firmer numbers, and they include things like. And they include things like reducing the size of the rail yard that we're building over on New Hall Road near the Santa Clara Station. It involves some of the innovative approaches to muck off all that we talked about at the BSV Committee Meeting in December, and the other things you see on the screen. I think the challenge that I want to flag for everyone here is that we will need to find over $400 million from those items that are labeled as level two on the screen. And at this point, we, you know, we don't see those numbers yet. We're continuing to work through this. The team is working very hard, very creatively, questioning all the assumptions that went into the current design. But I, but but there is a risk that we get to April and we don't have these, this this table adding up to a number over $700 million. We will continue to update you on how that progress is going and what factors go into the those numbers at each meeting going forward, and we'll go into even more depth at the BSV Two Committee. Oops, sorry, skipped over. And just, just to give you a sense of of how we're approaching this work, there's a series of task forces led by our Program Director, Monica Born, that are attacking each of the major level two cost savings. Those task forces are multidisciplinary. They're also, they also involve folks working both inside the, the, the program team, VTA employees, Bard employees. We even have some, some input from our, the BSV Committee Consultant, Goll Ziedler, who many of you know from the committee meetings. So they're interdisciplinary, they're cross cutting, we're questioning all of our assumptions. And again, we're aiming to have a much clearer picture of those numbers by April. Next up, I want to talk about another aspect of the cost savings, which is a workshop that we held with our Federal Transit Administration Project Management Oversight Committee Consultant, rather. The PMOC was on site for a full day, December 18th. Looking through those level one and level two cost savings items with us, they gave some really positive feedback, both deep meaningful feedback, but also positive feedback, that the items that you saw on the previous screen do appear to be with, either within our current environmental clearance, our NEPA clearance, or would require a simple reassessment and not require us to do a lot more environmental work to move forward with those changes. They also brought many of their own ideas, some really creative minds from that consulting team have challenged us to look at things that I think I would categorize these as level three, things like examining whether we could optimize and shrink the width of the large tunnel bore and some other, some other ideas about construction techniques that we're taking very seriously and starting to analyze. While we do all that work internally, we're also working closely with our stakeholders. And one, one important commitment we made to the board in 2024 was that our, the the formal groups that represent the stakeholders for this project, many of your constituents, the community working groups and the designer view committees would be hearing updates from us at the same time or even before these board meetings, so that no community member feels like they're in the dark about the project. On December 21st, we had a, a community working group which incorporated also our designer review committee for the two stations in downtown San Jose, the Downtown Station and the Deardon Station. Got a lot of, a lot of very strong feedback from CAWG members, largely positive about the direction we're taking with the design of the stations. And remember that this committee gave some very strong feedback to us in late 2024 about the importance of maintaining iconic design and good passenger experience. And I think the feedback we got from the CWG suggested that we're, we're on a good track to, to meet that mark. We also are increasing the frequency of newsletters and outward facing communications that we've, we've been, we've been putting out to the community. We've always had a quarterly newsletter for the, the program. As we move into the early construction, the items that Sarah will be talking about in a minute, we're going to increase the frequency of that newsletter to monthly. And then once the heavy tunnel construction is going on, you'll, we'll be seeing a direct communication to stakeholders on a weekly basis. Next, I want to move on to a task force that was created at the strong suggestion of this board in November. It's called the Contracting Task Force. And like our design task forces, it is interdisciplinary. It includes my staff, it includes Evelyn Tran and the General Councils, Inside and Outside Council, as well as Goll Ziedler. That task force is trying to answer the second question that I started with, which is, do we have a path to to reaching agreement with QWIT Shea Trailer, our tunneling contractor, on a tunneling contract at a price in terms we can agree with? Or should we explore and exercise and potentially exercise the off ramp that is contemplated in the contract? The right we have is VTA to look for another contractor if we can't agree to a price. It's really important that we do our due diligence there, and we don't take a decision like that lightly. If if we are going to take that next step and explore the off ramp more seriously, we want to make sure we've got a really strong backup plan in place. And that means reaching out to the industry. And since the beginning of January, Sarah, Monica Born, our General Manager, Carolyn, Ronak, Nyack, and myself from the BSV Team have been out at two major industry conferences, the George Fox Tunneling Conference in New York and the Golden Beavers Concert Conference in Los Angeles, talking to all of the major firms, and there aren't that many firms that can build a project of this size, but I think we've talked to every major global tunneling contractor working in the US. Gotten a lot of interest. So I think the, the good news is that there's a lot of interest in working on this program. But what's important for us is that we want firms that are not just interested in working for VTA, but interested in working on terms that are favorable to us and that help us manage the risk and the, the, the project costs. So we're going to move beyond those informal but meaningful, meet people at a conference, interactions. And in later this month, again, with the guidance of our General Counsel, we're going to be having some focused meetings with each of the vendors who've expressed interest and try to get, get much more detail from them about the terms under which they might be interested in coming to work for us. And and that'll really help us inform a decision about what's going to happen with our tunneling contract, hoping to have some preliminary feedback from that in March. So how does this all fit together? Starting in November, we were showing, we, we began showing this chart, so it's not a simple timeline, but rather kind of intertwined timeline of all the different major efforts that are taking place, the progress of the design, the really exciting construction that's already taking place at the West Portal, our community engagement. And then the decisions that we ask you as a board to make. And finally, how our interaction is going with the Federal Transit Administration. So again, what's exciting is that many of these milestones have been checked off, including the approval and the, the beginning of work at the early work, at Early Works Package Three C Two, which is the launch structure at the West Portal. The cost savings work will continue, and we're, again, we're hoping to have a, a report out to all of you by April on where that's at, and hopefully we'll be able to give you good news, but wherever we are with those cost savings will continue to be transparent throughout the spring. The lower right hand corner is the, is the track of work, the deliverables with the Federal Transit Administration. I know our, our federal colleague or federal lobbyists were here an hour or two ago, talking about the path to get that full funding grant agreement. And that, that, that's the track that is described in the bottom of this screen. And, yeah, I haven't updated this slide since the election, but I think we're in close coordination with that team to figure out what it, what it would mean to implement the advice of, don't be the first one in the queue, don't be the first one out of the chute asking the FTA for money. But to do it in a way that doesn't slow down the project or slow down the momentum we have right now. So that will be changing over the next month or two. It doesn't negate the importance of the cost savings work or the importance of the contract task force. We have to get, we have to get our, our budget under control. We have to have more certainty with our tunneling contractor. But I do want to be clear that the FTA timeline is going to be a fluid thing as we, as we figure out how things are going to, are going with this administration. With that, I'm going to hand the microphone to Sarah to give us an update on our construction.
Great. Okay, the fun part, the construction. So back in, let's see, oh, orientation of our project. I know there are some folks that are maybe, haven't been to 57 of these, talking about the project. So this is our alignment connecting on the right side of the screen to the existing Bart Line at Barriessa North San Jose Station. New stations at 28th Street, Little Portugal, Downtown San Jose, Deardon and Santa Clara. And then the, the area we're talking about is on the west end of the alignment where we plan to launch our tunnel boring machine. And that is where Early Work Package Three is located. Now, this is a plan view, and it shows our project site at the West Portal, right in Santa Clara Station. Three work packages have been authorized here as a responsible decision making for the project. The most recent was Three C, the TBM Launch Structure, which was approved by this board in December of 2024. Three B and Three A are related to site, setting up the site for success, environmental safeguards, utility connections needed to support the construction activities moving forward. Couple of photos from the site, we have, we, we have a wheel wash on the left side, which is very impressive here. It's being tested and commissioned. It's not a water line that we hit. We're, this is a really significant addition to the, the street sweeping that KST has already been doing to keep pollution off of our streets, but this will help significantly when we have trucks carrying excavated materials offsite. They have to get washed before they leave the site. And then also significant drainage feature has been constructed on site as part of the winter proofing or keeping pollution out of our stormwater runoff. Couple other photos from the site, got a robust access road again to facilitate minimizing, minimizing any impact to, to the environment from our, from our work and keeping the site working properly for the duration it needs to be in operation. A number of the utilities have gone in. This is an airline. It's a hard plastic line, and it's, it's being properly fused so that it, so that it functions for as long as we need it. So going back to the approval for Three, for Package Three C, this board gave direction on December 6th to go forward with Three C, but to investigate optimizations for that work package. And so VTA sent a letter to KST, our PDB contractor, with a list of optimizations we wanted them to look into. And we did that on December 19th. The deadline was December 20th, so we wanted to be a day ahead of time in the agreement. KST then undertook a technical analysis, pros, cons, a, an understanding from their perspective and their design team's perspective of, of what it would mean for the project and for the overall program. They provided that analysis to, to us in early January. We immediately set our team of subject matter experts to work on that technical analysis that we received at the same time as KST began a cost and schedule assessment that they then provided to us about 10 days later. It's been a really busy month. As soon as that came in, our same, our team, but also including estimators, our subject matter experts, you know, to weigh in on whether things were estimated in an appropriate sequence and an appropriate, to an appropriate level of detail, as well as our estimators and, and project control folks looked at that cost and schedule assessment to make their own assessment of what they believe the impacts could be, positive or negative to, again, both the Three C Launch Structure Package and also to the overall program. Then, just earlier this week, we issued a letter to KST with what we had selected so far and with, with direction to proceed forward. So coming back to a, a plan and profile view of our project site. If you look at the top and you see something with three kind of almost circles in it, it sort of looks like a caterpillar, which is why we call that our cat shaft. That is the major structure which is going into the tunnel depth, below the tunnel depth enough that we can get a tunnel boring machine in there and launched properly. The direction of tunnel drive is off to the left on that slide, so what you're seeing, the walls you're seeing there are above the tunnel. Looking to the right, what, what you see is a ramp approaching the bottom of the cat shaft. There are a couple of different construction methods used for that ramp. The big boxy part is cut and cover, and then the, and then the long, the rest of it that goes up to the surface is different, is different support, pre-support that goes in. The red line below on the profile shows where the trains will run in the future. That's the track, that's the top of rail. So the optimizations that we asked KST to investigate are summarized here. The first is economizing the confinement walls. These serve a number of purposes, and we looked at, we looked at reducing, we've looked at reducing them to economize how much material is going in and having to be installed and paid for. We looked at just installing the cat shaft, not installing the ramp leading up to it. We looked at installing the cat shaft and the cut and cover structure, but not the remainder of the ramp. We looked at reconfiguring some structural columns, and this was actually an idea we got from our Auditor General's subject matter expert, such that less material could be used and, and making it more economical. We also looked at economizing the ramp walls themselves as far as how much concrete and steel needed to go in. And then for the last one here, minimizing the temporary ramp, we reviewed the slope of the ramp for the trains in the final configuration. And then the slope that can actually be handled by our construction equipment, which is, which is much steeper. And to, just to see if we could save some money during construction there. So the punchline is, we didn't pick one of the, we didn't, we didn't choose, we aren't choosing to optimize away the ramp. And this is one of the primary reasons why. This is the project schedule for Three C. And if you look at the bottom line, there, the green line, the caterpillar shaft takes the whole time. And so the activities that we can do next to the cat shaft, the walls for the cut and cover section, the sheet pile and D walls, which is another name for slurry walls, it's just, it's walls that you pre-install before you excavate. They both have a lesser duration than the cat shaft, and they can be done at the same time. It's a nice, long site. There's plenty of access. Different setups can be working in parallel. And so what we found is that economizing the ramp away doesn't actually save us any time in the shaft construction. The other primary reason relates to the, the tunnel boring machine. So first, I want to just walk you really quickly through as basic a tunnel boring machine as I can, which is kind of a, it's basically an underground factory. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of parts and pieces. We'll just talk about a couple. Again, the direction of tunnel drive is to the left. So what you're looking at is a sideways view from the top on the top of the slide, and then from the side on the section view, so plan view and section view. So the TBM cutter head is pointed at the direction of tunnel drive, and that's on the far left. Then you have the remaining shield, which is basically a giant steel can. Behind that, what goes in is precast concrete segments. So between the shield and the segments, you create the underground space that becomes your tunnel that you then run passengers through. Then what you have to do to create that space is excavate material out. And so as the TBM uses pressure to drive forward, excavated material comes in through small openings in that cutter head and then is directed to the screw conveyor. The screw conveyor is actually just a giant helical steel, mostly steel with some hard facing on it, screw which can, which conveys or carries the material up and then deposits it on a conveyor belt. Basically, the same kind of thing you might put your luggage down on at the airport. That conveyor belt takes the excavated material all the way out the tunnel. However, you get out the tunnel on the ramp or, or, or through a complex series of getting up a shaft. And then the rest of the machine behind that is gantries. It's, like I said, it's an underground factory. You need electrical equipment, grout batch tanks, receiving area for this precast concrete segments that come in. There's a lot that goes into creating that underground space, and it all has to be, it all has to be in there. You can't just have the shield in there. You have to have the whole factory in there. Okay. So we're trying to lower this in the ground. And we're doing it in a shaft. I went too far. Okay. So the cat shaft is indicated again now in sort of a similar color, that, that, that yellowish orange. And what's important to note here is that it doesn't fit the whole TBM. It fits the cutter head, the shield, and not even gantry one. This is important because the TBM is, is, is fabricated, is designed and fabricated to all be connected. Gantry one is also needed for this machine to support that screw conveyor, which is huge and requires structural support. So a frame would have to go in to support it if we didn't have gantry one. The TBM can be reconfigured. Okay, so then the, the gantries, the TBM and gantries do all fit within the cat shaft plus cut and cover area, which is why we studied that limited area. The TBM can be reconfigured to connect to the gantries from the bottom of the shaft to the top of the shaft through what we call umbilicals. It's just a bunch of cords housing all the, all the connections needed to make that work. But it makes launch a lot. But it makes launch a lot slower, like by months slower. And it makes the whole tunneling operation slower. And so while it would save us uh some money in the in the short run to not build the ramp, it would impact the project significantly in the long run. And so that's the other major reason why we uh aren't, why we decided not to not to eliminate the ramp because we we don't want to uh we don't want to set ourselves up not for success. Okay, so where are we now with optimizations? So the first two, we are not proceeding forward with cat shaft only, cat shaft work and cut and cover. And then the shop, the very last one listed their economized shaft walls ultimately had uh uh too much schedule impact to save anything. Um, what we are looking at together with our contractor, we've met our our milestone deadlines uh with keeping them moving and providing them with authorizations as committed in the contract amendment. We are still looking into some details for this minimized temporary ramp and economized confinement walls. And we are again working at a very fast pace because we never want to get in the way of progress um to get get us set up for the future. But we are, yeah, exchanging information with the two teams. It's going really efficiently and we're we're looking more into uh these two optimizations.
Thanks so much for for the presentation. Um, let's see now if we have any public comment on the side.
There are no hands raised, Chair.
No one online, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, close public comment and go back, see if there are any questions from board members and let's start with Director Burt.
Yeah, thank you. And um since we did not have a meeting of the Oversight Committee in January, I want to kind of give some updates that have been um going on with discussions with staff, with our um our independent domain expert, Goll Ziedler, and um where we stand. So first, the framing of of just the launch site issues. Uh, this came about because the cost estimate of the launch site went drastically up from our original estimate uh to what we now have as the estimate. Uh, can you remind us of what those two different numbers were? What's in the in the original budget and what uh was in the revised quote?
The the original budget, which was for a design that is very different than what 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 Sarah walked through here. The original budget was for one hundred and forty million dollars for a much simpler launch box uh as we developed the design and and came to the conclusion that really wasn't appropriate or or even safe for the site. Uh, what this board approved was a three hundred and ninety-eight million dollar caterpillar shaft and ramp. Um, and then uh there are some other items uh that I I think were probably common to both both items, but that's the closest thing I can give you to uh apples to apples.
Closest apples to apples is a hundred and forty million to four hundred million. Um, and then uh we had a lot of effort, as Sarah explained, on really looking at alternatives. Out of the alternatives that were presented, how many dollars did we shave off of the three hundred and ninety-eight million?
So so if we proceeded with both of those alternatives, both of those would be worth approximately six to seven million dollars. However, we need to make sure that they don't cause uh they don't inadvertently cause more costs down the road. So that's the um, that's the, that's the the money taken out of uh Works Package Three C two if we proceed.
Yeah, so the cost savings that we had a lot of hope for as of right now is what we basically put up as a backstop um in it, if we had to, of all the remaining Measure A dollars, five hundred million dollars that would otherwise go to any other Measure A projects that will not get funded if we have to use that five hundred million. So we've drastically increased the hole that we have. Uh, it's not if, and oh, and I should add that um uh Tom and Sarah are now pursuing, as he really talked about, these other contractors to attempt to have uh a cost closer to bigger by a lot. We may be able to work that down, but we also have heard that our sales tax projections are down from what we thought. And those, that not only hits our operating budget for VTA, those dollars hit this project. Um, so that's what I was alluding to earlier about that we now have a better alignment uh between the pace that our lobbyists and consultants and DC just explained to us that we we probably shouldn't rush as much as we thought. We thought we really needed to rush to get ahead on that uh application for the full funding grant agreement or we might lose out. Now it's somewhat the other way around if uh that we don't, we still, it's still timely and we have to really move forward aggressively to get to that point. But uh we have a better alignment from really pursuing uh design changes. And that's how I would frame the challenges that we have right now, and that's a little sobering. But we still have now, as Tom and Sarah have said, we have these level two and level three cost savings, which are more significant design and contractor changes than were being considered six months ago. And uh and the good news is that we have some good alignment, at least in terms of what uh is being explored uh by alignment of our staff and um our independent consultant and Bart, uh that's part of this, these task forces. And um and all that are there, they they're really now looking at some more significant design changes. Some, one of the ones that Tom mentioned that's in level two is call it coming uh drilling from both directions. That saves time, but the other big possibility is that at least from the what uh east side, uh it could be from a smaller bore tunnel. Because uh at the Little Portugal area, we have the ability to do a cut and cover, which could align with that originally, we were looking at was twin bore the savings. And now we're we're having an agreement between Goll Ziedler and our staff and consultants that perhaps they think that a smaller single bore is actually the better alternative um uh akin to what we were looking at for the twin bore, but it's a smaller single bore. So that's a lot of kind of additional information, but this is really important stuff. Um, and we're not, if we were on any other aspect of our budget, if we were looking at uh uh a cost impact to something else of a hundred million dollars or two hundred million dollars, we would go holy smokes. And on a project like this, we get sucked into saying, oh, a hundred million here, a hundred million there. And those are sobering numbers. We still have opportunities to really make some changes that could solve this problem. And that's, the good news is we now have enough time to do it right and uh not surplus time, but enough time. Uh, because Tom and it was facing a a real tension between the time to reexamine these designs and the contracting methods and all that and this deadline to get the full funding grant agreement application in. Now he's got a little more time, not surplus time, just enough, it appears. So I want to frame those things for folks, um because um I I really think we need to put things out on the table, the reality of what we're facing. And um and that's where we are.
Thank you, and thanks for talking about the opportunity we have here to move forward and have tho- those discussions. Thank you, Director Self.
So I come into this new, but I did um watch the workshop in November and
I'm I'm so sorry, Director Self, I just realized I didn't give staff a chance to respond uh to the questions that that were raised. Tom, thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of things I wanted to uh maybe respond to uh from Director Burt's comments. Um, I would certainly agree that there is strong alignment between the staff and we've heard very clearly from the board both what your your design priorities are are and just how urgent it is for us to get our costs under control. So there's no daylight between the staff and the board on that. Um, and the team is just, I I can't tell you how hard they're working to to meet um even with a little more time, uh incredibly tight deadlines to save that money. Uh, wanted to provide a little more context on some of the pricing. So we haven't talked about specific pricing uh from the contractor uh in open session because um I I just want to really characterize some of the numbers that were were described carefully. Uh, we have not accepted a mine in line or any uh stage two price from Q H A trailer. Uh, we have independent cost estimates um that are uh that define our project budget. The the risk that we cannot bring two uh two big numbers together, two numbers that are far apart right now, is a real concern. That's why we're doing the contract task force. That's why we're exploring all these these items. Uh, I want to be a little careful about however not um using numbers that, again, I I just want to say it again. We do not, we have not accepted those proposals and uh they're uh the our 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 focus really ought to be on um contract structure, uh which contractors were willing to work with us at a price that could work for us. And uh focusing areas areas there rather than the gap between two numbers that are not really apples to apples. I just, I did want to share that.
Thank you, um Director Self.
So I'm looking at slide um four with the costs. And um I guess there's a cost associated with doing the tunneling and all the technology of that. And then there's the cost of the um the buildings. And I was thinking with the buildings, like I know in an airport terminal, you have like terminals that are kind of like more quick build and then maybe in the future you remodel to it be really nice. But there's a lot of like commercialization where there's vendors, there's restaurants. And I was just wondering, like, could you and these partner with some private entities to bring down the cost, you know, stadiums, they're named after different companies and they buy for the trademark. I was just wondering, like, think out of the box, the tunnel actually needs the technology and you can't partner with private entities on that. But these buildings, that seems like an opportunity to partner with private entities. And maybe they could pay for the development of that if they have certain rights. Just my thinking outside of the box and I'm a new board member, so.
Thank you, um Director Kam.
Uh, thank you so much. I I want to go back to Director Burt's uh points a little bit in that on um slide three, when you're looking at the cost savings, we had always talked about um the gap being the seven hundred million. And so to see that it's cost savings, I I just want clarity on what we're talking about here. Are we saying now that you're going to need up to one point two billion in cost savings? Or are you saying that you're looking for ways to save more than the needed seven hundred?
Okay, uh, but thank you for asking that question so clearly. I'm going to try to give as straightforward an answer as I can. Seven hundred million to one point two billion is areas where we're trying to modify the design and scope of the project in ways that um that still meet all the board's policy objectives, but save us a number at minimum seven hundred, but as Director Burton others have pointed out, uh to preserve that capacity in Measure A, uh try to get that savings up to one point two billion dollars through uh changing the scope of the project, but not in such a way that imperils our federal funding.
Okay, so the difference that the, because you know, when Director Burt was talking about uh the hole got bigger, um I was concerned, but this is adding preserving the me- the measures dollars, right? Is that?
By aiming for a number above seven hundred million, um uh uh in 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 simple terms, every dollar above seven hundred million helps us preserve more of that Measure A dollars.
Okay, so that's the, that's the 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 range. It's not like costs have gone up so that the hole got bigger in terms of more than seven hundred million.
I I I think the 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 second part of it is important and and the second bullet here, which doesn't have numbers because we're in some very sensitive negotiations with this contractor. But um the, there is a risk that if we don't, that 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 we we are far apart with Q H A trailer on the price of the tunnel. And if we can't get them down to our budget price, we need to find another contractor who can work at that price. And that's what that contract task force is all about.
But can I interject there? We would hope to find another contractor who could
I'm I'm sorry, Director Burt, let's keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much for that. Um, and then when you you go to slide number ten, when you're looking at the um the path to the FTA Full Funding Grant Agreement, um I'm assuming that given what we have talked about today, that the um the uh the schedule will move?
Um, I I I think and and
Because I mean, in Q two, you're looking at April having submitted uh readiness documents. So, you know, I mean, at this point, it sounds like it'll scoot over.
Yeah, I I I think the very last lower right-hand corner uh item on this chart, which is anticipated full funding grant agreement, December twenty-five, January twenty-six, I think to the point that the lobbyist made that we don't want to be the first ones up. I think that would move to the right, that that'd be how you'd implement that strategy, yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming that in future presentations, this will just be adjusted.
Yeah, we we kind of, we highlighted it to suggest that, yes, it's a work in progress, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Did we have uh more questions? Uh, yeah, Director Con.
Thank you, I'll just follow up on on that where you left it. There there was a, there was a checkpoint in here about moving forward with CP two and other things by needing the FFGA in place to do that. If the FFGA moved to the right, which it probably will whether we wanted to or not, and makes sense to slow it down for reasons that Director Burt mentioned, but but move, but allowing some of those other contracts to slide causes the overall project to slide, which could escalate costs and cause other issues. We're going to have to revisit the question of whether, when to move forward and whether to move forward without the FFGA in place, is that correct?
Yes, I I think we're not ready to confront the question of trying to build the tunnel without the full funding grant agreement yet. But one of the items that the task force is looking at is uh there's that bullet that says contract repackaging, scope size and bidability. There are a lot of things, uh the 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 project is designed in such a way that, for instance, some of the station buildings or some of the excavation outside the tunnel could be done uh without the tunnel contract being underway. So looking at those as well as the idea of concurrent tunneling, um that would be the best, the best use of our time right now would be a future proof ourselves by getting some of those ideas potentially ready to bid.
The tunnel was um critical path.
I'm sorry, Director Con, I think we
And the other thing I think, Tom, is is that if we choose to, say, rebid it or have a different contract tractor, we don't know. It would be difficult to meet that timeframe as well.
Right.
And so we have to take into account all of those at the same time.
Right.
So I I think it's an excellent question, I think.
And we're going to have perhaps some serious conversations on this board about revisiting some of the decisions that were made in the past, I believe. I'm just, I think we'd be prepared, should be prepared for that. The other, and that also leads to the importance of that discussion about concurrent development from the north and the west at the same time so that we are shortening the timeline. So in case there's a slippage in the timeline, we're not actually delaying a lot of the rest of the project. So I think that, to me, that piece of the concurrent tunneling and changing the methodology for the Berriessa to um Little Portugal area is a really crucial part of this and we need to do that right in the next few months as we're evaluating it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Um, if not, uh, thank you, Tom, so much for uh for the presentation. Uh, we'll move on. This item is informational, so there's no action required. Uh, so that brings us to item nine, which is um other items. And uh first is items of can nine point one, items of concern referral to administration. Are there any referrals um from my colleagues? Uh, well, if not, we'll go on to nine point two. Are there any announcements from colleagues? Uh, no, we'll go to nine point uh or we won't because we're able to accommodate everyone who is wishing to speak. Um, so next up, uh, we're continuing item seven, which is uh closed session. And um I believe we'll show on screen the the items um that 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 will be discussing. Um, do you have any public speakers uh wishing to speak on this item? I I don't see any, so I will close public I, I don't see any, so, uh, we'll close public comment. And to my colleagues, our closed session will be, uh, next room, next door in room, uh, 157. Thank you so much. We're now reconvening in open session and I'll turn over to Evelyn for report.
Thank you, Chair. The board did not take any reportable action in closed session on 7.1C and 7.1D. Thank you.
And with that, we adjourn. Thank you all so much.
I will end meeting for all.